All right, we'll now call the City Council Regular Meetings Order for October 28th. Please rise to the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation is given by Councilwoman Brittany McGuire.
Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this evening. Thank you for a great beginning to our week, Lord. I'm asking you to continue to be with us as we go throughout our week and go about the duties that you would have us do. Lord, be with us tonight as we go through each and every one of these decisions. Give us wisdom and help us to know the best course of action that you would have us take. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated. Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember McGuire, here. Councilmember McCure, here. Councilmember Taylor, here. Deputy Mayor Bernard, here. Mayor Anderson, here. We have a call.
All right, first up, we have the consent agenda. This will be for items four through 10. Any council member wishing to remove any of these items?
I'd like to remove C5.
All right, so it'll be four, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10.
And nine also.
Four, six, seven, eight, and 10. Are you looking for a motion?
A motion to approve.
We have a motion approved. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, first up is item number five. It will be City Council Regular Meeting Minutes for October 14th.
On H14, well, I'm pretty sure that was it. It was about the, where we moved the homecoming parade where me and Ms. Taylor had voted no. I went back and looked at the YouTube video and we both voted yea on that, not may.
Okay.
When you make a motion, just move to approve with that correction and we'll take care of it.
Any other questions or changes?
Mayor, I had, you had to understand, I'm not able to log on, so I can't tell you exactly where it said in the minutes, but the young lady that came to the podium at the last meeting and invited the council members to the...
Forum or debate?
Yes. I was confused about the way it read. Did she not invite everyone? Because there were some names that was left off. I was confused about it.
As far as I'm aware, she invited everyone.
I was confused by the wording too, but it says she invited the council members and then it also said that she invited the other four that were running. So it was just listed in two separate sentences, I believe is how it is in the minutes.
Any other questions or changes on item number five? We'll just need a motion to approve with said changes.
I'll make the motion to approve with those changes on the minutes.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number nine, this will be an event request for Lodewitt Classic Faster Nothing. We have, we have a representative. Looks like Fam is here.
Good evening, Council.
Give your name and organization for the record.
JT Clark, Florida Airport Management and Biotech Applied Research.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so we were approached by a professional racing group Faster Nothing about nine months ago wanting to do an event here. They typically do them in the Caribbean and Puerto Rico. Fortunately, with the same Orlando Flight Safety District Office, which we had out this morning doing inspection of the airfield, and we got an AOK for the event. So basically, it's our first event. Lodewitt Classic, for those that don't know, is actually a subsidiary of Howard Hughes, and that was why the airfield was opened back in the World War II days. So we're trying to pay homage to why the airfield was built in the first place and just trying to create a, an event for the community. So hopefully, it's a good time, whether 50 people show or more, we'll be prepared for the attendance regardless. Proceeds, also, I might add, will go to the VFW. We have Avon Park Athletics Department, Sebring Athletics Department coming to help volunteer. A lot of the wrestling team and football teams will help us usher in folks and out of folks, so we want to make sure that we reiterate them for their time as much as we can. But still unsure of what kind of proceeds the event will bring in.
Okay. Any questions or concerns for this event?
No, go ahead, Mr. Jerry.
As you might guess, I have concern about the liability associated with that since it's on city property. The, it's going to have to be substantial insurance and clear identification. The, I'm totally in favor of these type of events, but needs to have adequate assurances for the city with regard to that. And I don't know if it's the best way to do this, but probably through the ticket and even the participants need to release liability in case you have a car flip or something like that.
That's correct, yeah. Through event rights, it will be selling our tickets. That indemnity will be in there, one, and then each racer that pays to be here will also have to provide their own insurance and identify both the sponsors of the event and the city. And I can forward you that language for you to review.
And the sponsor will need to insure as well in case of insurance.
That's correct.
Because they're going to have to review all those insurance policies with regard to those participants.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I have a question for JT. JT, like I said, my laptop and my iPad hasn't downloaded yet, but as I was looking at it early this morning, there was a red marker showing, I guess that's where the racing is going to take place. My concern, to help me out, I may be just, you know...
Caution.
No, not caution, you know, that too. I'm not familiar with it, so maybe you can help me out. Is this something that races are done on, at the airport on the tarmac? Does it damage the tarmac in any way? I mean, and the reason why I'm asking is, is this the same, is this the same area where the planes come in and land or anything? And does it damage the tarmac in any way when we conduct these races?
No, ma'am, it doesn't damage the tarmac, and these are, these events are encouraged by the FAA, FFA, FAA, to get the community engaged in aviation or STEM, you know, higher engineering type events. Like I said today, the FAA was on site inspecting the airfield, and as long as we don't get into acrobatics, which we are not, then they are okay with it.
So there was an event there on September, which was like a what, prequalifying type situation?
That was an event that was a promo video, which we did issue all NOTAMs in accordance with FAA circulation.
And then they had another event the other night?
Correct, we've done three to date so far.
Okay, so if I had not have been scrolling on social media, I wouldn't have seen that.
That was...
So I'm just curious why it wasn't brought to us before the event request was.
Because those were not events. If we have workers on or near or equipment on or near, we just have to issue what's called a NOTAM, which is Notice to Airman.
And so who gives the authority to shut down the runway?
So the runways were never shut down.
No, for this event, they will be, correct?
That is if the FAA views that there will be acrobatics, and then they'll issue a TFR, Total Flight Restriction. But because acrobatics are not in play, then they will likely not shut down the runway for that event.
So, so you're going to have cars participating in drag racing events, but you're not going to shut down the runway?
No, ma'am. So you have an air bus and air control, and you just monitor the air traffic?
Okay, so, and I'm just asking because I don't know.
Of course.
So should an airplane need to come and land on that? Would you stop the event or would you detour them to another?
No, 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 yeah. At the end of the day, flight safety is paramount. So everybody's safety is paramount, but as a public use, you know... Thank you, Mike. The guy with the two degrees that can quote this a little better.
Oh, ma'am, what this is, is actually a veterans' recognition event, December 7th Day, so it's going to be a wings and wheels event. We're going to have folks with military-style aircraft that are going to fly in prior to anything happening, and it's going to be a static display for folks to come out, vendors, everything of that nature. When the actual race does start happening, we can shut down the runway, but we have to be, one runway will definitely be shut down with the lighted Xs and everything, and the other runway can be NOTAM, but if there's an emergency, then people can still get in and out. All we have to do is move the vehicles out of the way, and everything on the airfield is going to be set up the same way you would for an airshow, so we have proper distances for fast movers on the runway 250 foot from center line, so we meet all criteria. I've already met with the Southeast Regional Group that handles airshows, and they also issued the TFRs, Temporary Flight Restrictions, if that's needed in the event, and none of those folks, again, because we're not doing aerobatics, we don't have to have an aerobatic box, and aircraft are going to be in place prior to somebody coming out and just running down the runway. It's actually much, much safer than an airshow. And with regard to damage to the runway, runways are designed for, whether the design group, the weight and the speed of the aircraft coming in, so 150,000 pound aircraft slamming into the pavement will do more damage to it than just a car running down the runway. There'll be no damage.
But, but they're not necessarily running down the runway, they're doing burnouts, wheelies?
They can.
And what is it called, a stand stop, a brake stand? That won't heat up the asphalt or the runway?
You could end up with some black marks, but it wouldn't be as much as an aircraft very, very heavy coming in and hammering into the pavement. For very busy airports, you have to actually have friction tests because they leave so much rubber on the runway. This is not anywhere near that.
Okay. And you feel like this is going to make an economic impact on Avon Park?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Yes.
In what ways?
I mean, each racer will need to, you know, come in on, they may come Thursday nights, you know, Friday, setup is Friday. Sunbelt is offered to sponsor some of the event. We're still looking at some of the local businesses to sponsor the event as well, but you know, if, we could really easily see 3,000 people there that day.
And so will they be utilizing our, the Jacaranda for overnight stays? Are they going to be utilizing our restaurants and...?
Yes, so we did reach out to the TDC and got a list of all the hotels, and we've been asking the hotels if they want to do any rates special for the event, but we've totally tried to engage them. The Spartan Race is the same weekend, so most of the TDC dollars are supporting that cost for the weekend.
Okay, and I just have one more question. I noticed in here that there's not an event estimate for the costs. Was that left out for a reason? I don't see it anywhere.
I can talk about that a little bit, I'm not sure which cost you're talking about, but...
Well, usually whenever we have an event, there's a bid as to the cones, the overtime, the motion signs, you know, the, what do they call those?
Associated with closing down roads and door parks.
But I didn't see one with this one, but aren't they requesting 64 being detoured?
He can, he can talk about that. I want to talk about other fees and just when he's done talking then.
Yeah, the way, it said it was detoured, but when I looked at the map, I just saw everything internal inside the airport. So looking at that, and I wasn't even sure how the council was going to go about making the approval, so I didn't have anything set up. If there's cones, I could drop off cones, but there was, from what I see, I wasn't going to shut down 64 at that location to try to reroute everybody around. No, it's internal event.
So there won't be any cost from the city?
If it's internal, there's no cost, I just give them the cones.
Okay, and so you're going to want to have the fire department there, right?
Go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
So there will be costs associated with this from the city?
So let me... We cover those costs. Let me talk about that right now. So that paper just handed out, we at the city don't have a concrete way to reimburse for the fire department services. We generally go to events and can respond to other things, but out there, we're going to, we feel like we need to dedicate people and equipment there. So that paper I just handed you guys is, would create fees that we could charge for this event. We're not asking to vote on it tonight, I just want you to take that paper home, look it over, come up with ideas for the very next meeting, so in November, we'll be able to vote on fees that we could potentially charge for this event. So yes, there will be, will be charges, but we haven't come up with that number yet. But that's what that paper I gave you tonight is.
Ma'am, I'm actually meeting with two representatives from the sheriff's office tomorrow to talk about what they think they would need to have a safe event, and we're also meeting with representatives from a couple of paramedic companies as well. So we're letting the experts tell us what they think they need, you know, based on what we feel is going to be the size of the crowd to make it a memorable event.
To be clear for the record, your name is?
Michael Powell, Chief Operations Officer of Florida Airport Management. Sorry about the stance.
So mentioned that there were some preliminary events where people were running cars up, testing the track and things like that. You know, to me, that's part of the event, and that needs insurance and indemnification if you're going to have people out there running, doing things that are unusual to the airport, such as running cars up the runways and things like that.
I just assume that would fall underneath Florida Airport Management's $6 million liability that we already have in place, and that all the FAA and FDOT protocols were already met. So that insurance would then be in turn, you know, that insurance is already in place, the way, the way we felt that our current policy reads in our management agreement.
Okay.
And so then I see, sorry, I did have more than one question. You said there is going to be alcohol out there at that event?
Yes, so the nonprofit is part of the event approval today, and it's to make sure planning and zoning is okay with it, so the nonprofit thought they would host one stand for that. Bernie Little could sponsor it if they wanted to, Budweiser could sponsor it if they wanted to, but the, it will not, the nonprofit itself would man and station that bar.
And TJ, alcohol is usually sold at events like this?
Yes, ma'am.
And the drivers, of course, that's our flimsy to them, right?
A thousand percent, yes, ma'am.
We hope. Yeah, I mean, the interesting thing about an event like this is just that, you know, the Sebring Raceway did start on part of the runway out there. I think they still use part of the runway, it's probably been asphalted over, but, you know, so I mean, something like this could spark something more. There is a rich history there, obviously the nonprofit that's involved, you know, there's definitely a very cool story there. So something great may come of it, it may be a one-time event, we don't know, but I certainly would like to keep an open mind to try new things. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve item number D9 for the Fast and or Nothing, and I'm happy to have the event at our airport.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Council.
All right, that brings us to item number 11. This will be a public hearing and second reading of ordinance number 12-2024.
Ordinance of the City of Avon Park, Florida, providing for adoption of code changes to code section 98-77 of Avon Park Code ordinances correcting grammatical errors, adding indexing for water, wastewater and fire service usage rates, increasing potable water customer usage rates and adding fire protection water customer usage rates based on the fire line size. Providing for adoption of the code changes to section 98-238 of the Avon Park Code of ordinances, increasing wastewater customer usage rates and restructuring wastewater rates. Providing codification and repeal of conflicting codes, ordinances and resolutions, providing for severability of scrivener's errors and providing effective date.
Okay. Do you guys want to give us a brief overview again of what the second reading is about?
Yeah, I have a comment first, please, Mayor.
Go ahead.
On page 311, you'll note that the last bullet point under financial impacts, it reads impact fees overall, $400,000. That needs to be deleted. You may recall that we removed that portion out of the ordinance. I did reach out to Florida Rural Water Association to work on commissioning a new rate study for our impact fees. I've not heard back from them yet, but I do understand it's quite a long process, and I just wanted to make that noted before Jason jumps in.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's everything we spoke about in the, in previous meetings, so we're, it's all, it's all the same. The difference that we spoke about, it was, I'm trying to remember, we had the pretreated industrial waste, it went from 11 to 7 cents, but everything else stayed the same. This is to, for all the costs, it's to bring the revenue up for all the costs that the utility has, and there's plenty of cost in front of us, we're getting places off of, from septic, get it into the waste, wastewater collection system that's mandated by DEP, and there's five projects, and we had to come up with the names of the projects, and there's costs identified in all of them, so we have to have an action plan because we are in the Lake Okochobee Basin, and, you know, we have, we have to be able to fund these projects going forward, and the fees that you see there, they were developed by Joseph and I, taking a look at our, our entire operation, what we need and what we need to plan as an enterprise fund, what we need going forward. So that's, that's, that's what we did.
As part of item number 11, that also sets the septic receiving rates.
Correct.
All right, any other questions on this? We did have a sign up. There's nothing from council. So there was Ann Lindsey Baker. They had originally signed up for D12, but if you guys are here for septic calling, I'm guessing D11 is probably what you're after. So if you guys want to make a comment or ask a question, just give your name and address for the record.
Mayor, before, we need to open the public hearing.
Okay, sorry about that. Just have a seat, right with you. Public hearing for the second reading of ordinance number 12-2024 is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on this subject can now do so, and we will start with Ms. Baker.
Okay, thank you very much, I'm Ann Lindsey Baker. It's a pleasure for me to have with us this evening Robert Baker.
Baker and crew.
Baker and crew. Bob is the second generation of the Baker family to continue in our business, and we now have the third generation who will be taking it on as well. We have been in business since 1947. We will be starting our 78th year. We were the first septic company in Highlands County, starting at that time. The, I'm sorry, we're a little late to the party, because this is your second reading of this particular rate increase, and I just felt compelled to kind of give you the implications of that decision, because as of Friday, this will be the rate that we will be charged if it's approved this evening by the council. And we have been paying the six cents for quite some time, and we do understand the need to go up on rates. We do that all the time, but we also do it based on what the community can bear. We have experienced a $500 rate charge for pumping a 1,000 gallon septic tank. We started that in January. We had to drop that price because the community could not afford it. We had other septic companies do the same thing, dropped it even lower than 400. We've been doing it the longest, I think we do it the best. We find that whenever we go out to pump a tank, that we have a customer who says, "I've never seen somebody open the second chamber of the tank," and we always do that. We do a lot of services for that price at $400. We run a truck, we maintain that truck, we pay a driver, we dump at the city. By the way, we are very appreciative of the Avon Park Wastewater Treatment being the only facility in Highlands County that will allow our septic waste. And it is also exciting to see the screener back in operation, because we were having to wait an extended period of time to dump and then do our own screening cleaning, which we have also done in the past on our site, so we really appreciate that being up and running. But, bottom line, it's 150% increase for air companies, by going from 6 cents a gallon to 15 cents a gallon by this Friday. That price will have to be passed on to the consumer, unfortunately, and we already find that there are many residents in this community that can't afford it, put off having their septic tank cleaned, and sometimes we're called when they finally can't do anything else. There is septic on the ground, in the house. We try to make some suggestions for how they repair that or what they can do, but it will cause a nuisance, it's a violation of DEP, Florida statute, and Florida Administrative Code, for them not to repair or replace. We are under a new code by the DEP that requires a person who has to replace their septic tank, if they are under an acre in their lot size, they have to put in an aerobic treatment unit, which is a significant expense to our residents throughout the state of Florida, but my concern is for Highlands County. And because we are a rural community, we do deal with an older population, limited incomes, this type of rate increase for us and other septic companies, but especially for us, will be detrimental to a lot of people having their septic tank pumped out. So we are asking that there be some additional review and consideration. We have called around to other counties. This is a rate that would not be uncommon for Polk County, Miami-Dade, for Leach County, for some of our larger counties, but for our rural counties, this is a lot all at once. And not just for us, if we have to eat it, we'll eat it, we're not going out of business over it. I expect we will stay in business for a long time, but it will have an impact on your residents and the cleanliness of your community and those that are in and use septic tanks. So if it could be considered that there be an incremental increase rather than that 150%, or that you charge, there are a lot of out-of-town companies that come in with 6,000 gallon tankers, and they are coming out of Polk County and coming in here. You have several local companies that usually take care of Highlands County, and we only serve Highlands County. Probably 90% of our customer base is Highlands County. Yeah, if not more. Either charge us a little bit more and those out-of-county companies that use your facilities more, they might be able to handle it. They're coming out of larger counties than Highlands, so that I just wanted to put on the table for the council's consideration before you approve this increase.
A couple of things to consider before we discuss this. First of all, if you do decide to change this for some reason, because it is the second reading, it's a substantive change, you'd have to start everything all over, which means you'd have to republish in the bills, which would mean you would have a couple of months of more delay, which I understand is a real problem with utilities right now. The second thing it considers, as to charging other out-of-county people, utilities are generally, whether they're private or public, you know, they have to have, have to treat people similarly that are similarly situated. I'm not sure that somebody being outside the city would qualify as not being similarly situated, and so it'd be difficulty. And I'd have to research that to give you an absolute firm answer on it, but I'm thinking that that would be a problem. It's called flow control, and it's, it can be a problem. So those are the things you need to consider. I would say that if you decide to go ahead and pass it the way it is, that you could take it up later as if you wanted to reduce it, because the statute that says that you're supposed to put it on the bills, says that any increases have to be put on the bill, so you could decide to decrease a rate that would not have to be on the bills. It'd still have to be published the same way you do any other public hearing for ordinance, but that aspect of it would not have to be fulfilled, in my opinion.
Any questions for Ms. Baker before they go?
I would highly recommend, if you've never been out to the Avon Park Wastewater Treatment Plant, I'm just telling you, it's amazing. And I enjoy the staff, I enjoy what they do, they do an outstanding job. It's top of the line. I know there are probably a lot of repairs and things that need to be made, equipment that needs to be replaced, so I get why there has to be an increase. I just request that you give consideration to it not being as much, all at one time, and implemented in three days.
And at the same time, there, my name is Jessica Baker. At the same time, there also, aren't any resources for those who cannot afford to have the service provided. There's no grants, there's no charities, if you cannot afford... no grants. There's no charities. If you cannot afford a septic pump out for your house, you can do nothing but beg the local companies to take pity on you.
And charge less or take a payment plan or.
And that's.
What's your name, sir, for the record?
Oh, excuse me. I'm Michael Baker.
So if this increase is going to happen, perhaps there's a community group or someone who can really start to address the problem with having to pay $500 now to pump out your septic tank in order to live in a clean, healthy environment and have a clean, healthy neighborhood too for people who live around you.
How often does that need to be done?
It depends on your system. Regular maintenance would be three, every three to five years for a regular household. But if you have a system that is failing, perhaps your drain field is failing, it's been, for whatever reason, you might need to get your system pumped every couple of weeks, every couple of months, if you cannot afford a repair, which is in the thousands. So if these people can't afford just a simple pump out, they might not also be able to afford a repair, if you're on a fixed income, perhaps.
Especially with the new DEP regulations having to do with repairs on systems and septic tanks. I want to piggyback a little about that because there's very little education out there as well for educating the public in their septic tanks and what they should be doing and not be doing to them to make them last and be more maintained better. So you don't need as many pump outs, right? I was curious. I know there's a lot of new DEP rules. I'm very up with legislation on it. I know it's impacting the entire state, not just this county or city. But are these funds, this increase going to improve the plant itself? Are these funds going to be used to help onsite wastewater and other waste management projects as a whole? I mean, is there another way to get the, I mean, I don't know if that's an appropriate question for this, but that's what I was wondering, where are these funds directed? I mean, is this increase is going to help that plant, get the better screens, maintain flow, et cetera, or are they going to fix other output of, of waste management for the, for the county?
To answer your question, Joseph Sliva, utility manager. To answer your question, yes, it's gonna, we're trying to make this a self-sustained ordeal here. One of the things we requested this year in our budget was money for a new septic machine, new digester, better, you know, just work the process.
Replacement of what burn equipment.
It is, it is very rundown back there. We have to do something. And the idea is to always improve.
Sure.
So it is to become self-sustaining.
I have a question. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, basically, everything that we did take into consideration from the surrounding areas for this price point. We looked at our rates going up for the hauling, for the landfill, and then also just everything else, the polymers for the screw presses, the parts itself for the screw presses, everything's going up.
Yeah.
So it's kind of how we came up with this average, which the, just, and in the next closest place, which I caught when they might not even be open anymore.
Likely.
They were charging by the ton. When we did the math on a 3500 gallon tanker, it came out to 15 cents. So that's, that's where we've got our number from, and we felt that it was justifiable by what we need to accomplish.
Okay.
Well, Mayor, I have a question for, for him, and then.
Do, do we have any more questions for the Bakers before they're here?
Yeah, I do. Ms. Baker, what percentage of your clients or customers that you have do a lot of pump out? What percentage that you're constantly having to?
The ones I have been on, which I have been on, I would say you find probably 50% are well-maintained, maybe a, a little bit less, let's say 40, 60. So sometimes we show up and it could be 60% of those we pump out haven't had a pump out in 15 years. Or 10. And the remaining percentage do it probably every five to seven years. And so they are able to maintain theirs the way we recommend. Also, it depends on the number of people that are in the house, believe it or not, type of toilet paper you use, and the disinfectants you put into your septic tank can impact how well your septic tank functions. Do you have a filter that will screen out any impurities before it goes to the drain field? Because that would determine the life of your drain field. So I would say probably at least 60% we find are not maintaining according to what is recommended. And I would say probably of that 60, we might have 25% that are actually running out on the yard.
I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's all I have for them.
Okay. Thank you guys very much. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Mr. Silva? This is from Mr. Silva or Jason. Do you know the percentage of houses in Avon Park that are on a septic tank as opposed to the ones that are hooked to city sewer?
So we were just, we were just talking about that, and we feel like it's probably 50 to 100. So percentage, it's very, very low.
Is that on septic all the way out?
No, just within city limits.
Ms. Baker, Ms. Baker, we'll have to get you to not comment from the crowd. Any comments that are made need to be in the microphone.
For, sorry. Did I answer good enough?
I, it was muffled. There was too much commotion.
We, we, it's for the residents of Avon Park, there's very few that are on septic because they're required to hook up, and then we make every effort to try to get out there. There are a few here and there that are on septic, but we're trying to, and that's one of the things that we have to get them off with the projects to get them off of septic and get them into the city.
And this is.
Ms. Taylor, go ahead with your question.
This is for Silva. As I go, although this is the second reading, and as I go look at the different fees that was changed, it looks like all of them came within maybe pennies, a dollar. But for whatever reason, the three, the 3,000 gallons was a big jump from 292 to 1357. And the rest of them, you know, they pretty much, what, and I know what we like to do. We like to compare the surrounding cities and whatever. What surrounding cities did you compare this with?
Well, the, the, that rate, usually it's a little, it's, it's a little bit under double for water, what sewage is. And we put the total amount there, what we're actually getting from that, which isn't a, a very large amount. That's the calculation is like, just usually if you're paying, say, 450 for water, you're paying $8 for sewer. That's usually like the, the ratio. We're a little bit lower than that, so the $6 was right in that price point. And then what we used to come up with the rate was our operating cost and seeing what we needed to do going forward. We have plenty of things going forward, projects that are in the pipeline, things that we have to do. So we looked to see where we needed to be at, and we kind of worked down, like looked at what we needed, and then established the rate where we needed to be at. That's kind of what we did in looking at the projects that we have. For instance, you know, just, one of those, the septic to, septic to, to sewer, it's OSTDS projects that we have, it's, it's millions. It's millions of dollars. So if, we won't get there with that small, that incremental, the increase that we had. Before, we were just at $28, one flat rate. This is just getting us up to that. You were looking probably at commercial, commercial rates because we didn't, we didn't even charge
No, this is residential inside the city.
Is that a 314?
We didn't have a sewer, we didn't have a per, per thousand gallon sewer rate in the city. We were a flat rate, $28. So I dropped that to 2550 and, and did like an estimate and taking into consideration everything that was said by council. If there was someone who just lived by themselves, they're actually going to pay lower if they just used the 3,000 gallons. Then they're going to pay a lower water and sewer bill than they would prior to these, this amendment change.
And so when you said, you know, we need to get to a certain point, meaning revenue, did you discuss that with Melanie, where we needed to be?
We've been, we've been in discussion the whole time, Melody, Joseph, and myself, and Danielle. We've all been in discussion to, talking about the rates and where we should be at as far as our rates goes.
And, and although we was trying to reach a certain revenue, what city, what surrounding area did we compare it to anybody?
Yeah, we looked at other, we looked at other, yes, I, I, I put, I put some of the, those up, I believe in the presentation that I had, so.
I can't remember though. That's why.
Yeah, the first, the first presentation we did, sorry, this is kind of get some feedback. The first presentation we did had all the rates. I can possibly pull it up and come back to that question, but of course, cities are more expensive, and then you get out to some of the other areas here. But it's, it's a, a very fair amount of what we're charging.
Yeah, we certainly weren't the cheapest or the most expensive. I think it was probably at, you know, 60 percentile. It was above middle of the road slightly.
I think, Joseph Sliva, I think to maybe answer your question a little bit more is, I believe we've reached out to, it was either 12 or 13 surrounding municipalities. Some of them were too high or just too low, so we didn't use, well, no. So the ones that were just too high, we didn't use. But everything that we felt was fair, Fort Meade, Waukesha, Spring Lake, Sunland Lake, Sebring, Lake Placid, all that was in there. So we, we really tried to make sure we met the middle ground. Then we also took into consideration the Florida groundwater study as well, the report that we had done in 2020, I believe.
Okay.
So we took that into consideration for the capacity.
All right. We got a speaker here. What is your name and company, sir?
I'm sorry?
Name and address or company, whichever you prefer.
Robert Santmeyer. I'm retired. I moved to this town. I love it. I've been here seven years. I'm up on Riviera Street up by the high school. I just, I just love it here. But anyways, I'm just kind of shocked about the sewage bill, but I'm a combat veteran. I'm also an Eagle Scout. And one thing I'm a trainer, well, a couple of different things. This is where the Boy Scout kicks in, is I've driven through the town when it's pouring down rain. The meteorologist said it was going to, you know, 80% chance of rain or whatever. And it's just pouring down rain, and the water sprinklers are gone. And I'm going, what a waste of resources. It's using electricity and wear and tear on the pipe or on the pumps, and we don't need to strain our resources and possibly get a sinkhole or sinkholes. It's just, that's where the old Boy Scout kick, kicks in. Every place I've ever, just about every place I've ever lived, they've replaced the electric meter and the water meter and the gas meter. They said, you're not using enough. We're so wasteful as Americans that all I'm asking is nobody come in and get overtime on shutting it off when it's pouring down rain. You can tell in advance if it's a long weekend or a weekend, just shut that automatic, and it's 80% forecast or 70% forecast of rain, just shut that off. Just shut the timer off. That's not going to kick in. It's just, to me, it's common sense. It's just a suggestion. And the sewage thing that brought up, I don't know. I mean, I guess it needs stuff explained to me because it does seem, why is sewage so high? I'm looking at a bill, $28 is my average sewage bill. That's over 300 a year. And people, people that lot, you know, that rented stuff, and I tell them that, oh, well, your bill is over 1,800 a year. And they, they, no, it's not. It's like, us humans can break it down by the month, but then we multiply it by 12. It's like, they, it's, it's hard to comprehend that much. So I used to, I lived all over the country. I had city sewer and septic tank, and, and sewage was never this high. I mean, it, it was, you know, $5.60. Septic tank was 150, $200 to get it pumped. But you've got to compare apples to apples. I used to get mine pumped for, ah, five to seven years, but I know how to treat a septic tank. Guy in their business told me once, he said, if it doesn't go over you and it doesn't go through you, it doesn't go down the toilet. So that's, that's, I thought that was pretty good. And I would add yeast once a month, you know, a tablespoonful. But, and the people that pumped it was always impressed. He said, whatever you're doing, just keep doing it. Now, if you multiply, you know, $28 times 12 times five years, what's that come to? That's, that's a lot of money. And it's the same thing with us living in the city, paying, paying that monthly fee. A lot of people don't complain about it, but if they knew they were paying over $300 a year, they say, now, wait a minute. Now, pull that and multiply that by five, you know, that's over 1,500. I just, I mean, it's probably all legit, but where is this money going for the sewage? That's, that's basically my question. The first thing I brought up about shutting off watering Main Street, you know, the center, is a suggestion that just shut, just shut off the timers when, when it's, when it's pouring down rain. And nobody needs to come in, just do it beforehand before anybody gets off work. I'm not sure how your setup is, but I appreciate. One thing that touched me when this started, like I said, I'm a combat veteran and, and an old Boy Scout, as you guys prayed, and you said to pledge in allegiance. And I love my country, and I appreciate you guys, you know, serving our, serving our city. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Well, we'd also like to thank you for your service too.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. See, one question for Jason that might clarify it. So you mentioned that your, your bill every month was $28?
Yeah.
Had been $28. Is that what you were talking about, if someone's using the minimum, they have $28, it's now going to go to the 1350?
Yeah, so, so the $28 and then, I don't have it here in front of me, but it's with the water and everything, because the water went up, I believe, 5% on the water. So that increase was very minimal. The sewer, because I dropped it down to 2550 base charge, if you get to 3,000 gallons, you are going to be under. You're, you're not going to be paying the same amounts, $2.50 less than what you would have been paying. But if you're, if you use more of the water, then it's not, you get to use as much without there being an impact. If you, if you use a bunch of gallons, then it's going to cost you. But I, I'll, I'll say this. If for some reason you have a water break or you have some kind of issue, and it goes to your house, and, and we can prove, and we go out there, and there's evidence that the water break never went into the sewer system, like if it's a flapper at your house, you're responsible for that, in the toilet system. But if it's outside in the service line or something along those lines, and we can prove that, then we can just go back to your historical bill, make that adjustment. We'll just, we still have to charge you for the water, but we're not going to charge you for the sewer that just went into the ground. So those are some of the, the things we do.
So the minimum charge would be somewhere around 2550?
2550. It's $2.50 less.
It's likely by what you've said that you're probably a minimalist user, and so it would be roughly 2550 from the current $28. Just so you know.
Okay. I under, okay, I understand that. But I, I guess my main question is, is why is the sewage so high, when other places were six, seven bucks a month? And you're saying these guys are paying, what, 500? 500? And it's like, you know, I used to get my pump started at, I think, $75. By the time I got it last pumped, I think it was 150. And I lived all different places throughout the country, so this isn't one location. And they're pretty much standard. And, and, and that's what I'm saying. I was surprised, 500. And I started looking at my bill and started crunching the numbers. I'm going, well, hell, I'm paying over 300, 300 a year. Why is the sewage so expensive?
I can probably answer part of that. So the, dealing with utilities for over 40 years, Florida has got an incredibly strong regulation program with regard to wastewater plants and treatment because of the natural resources Florida has. And so it's, building treatment plants has gone up quadrupled, like in the last 15 years. The cost of building plant has gone up tremendously. But the cost of treatment is also because of an increase in regulations and so on that we have to meet in order to not be in violation of state laws, federal laws as well. So that, that's my aspect. I guess the rest, Jason.
Yes. Just to give you the number, I have it, I have it here. It's, if, if you're a user of 3,000 gallons, then you're going to pay $39 a month. If you're a user of, prior to, it would be $40.92. So that's a difference of a dollar, 92. Now, it's talking about the, the other sewage, like five to seven years, kind of talking to Joseph about that as we were kind of in a little sidebar in a way. Those, those rates, if you, just took, just say you took an average $30 bill, right? $30 for, for the sewer. So that would extend you out if you did 30 times 12, 360 times 7, 25, 20, over a seven-year period. Five years would be $1,800. That's how much you would pay. Versus if, if you did your actual septic and you had to, to pay what they're, what they're getting charged, you know, it would, it would, might be half of that. I don't know what exactly they're charging the customers on, you know, go in, go into that. They talked about the 4, $400. But it seems like it's a cheaper proposition for the, the septic for, from, from, from their standpoint. standpoint. However, the state is really cracking down, especially on anything that's by water bodies. And they're mandating that we get people off. Now, we can't go get people off that aren't within city limits, but we, we did have to establish a plan. Kim Lee Horn created it. We had to submit it and they accept it and say, okay, yes, this is all the actions that the city's taking to try to get people off. The goal is to get everybody off of it. And there was an incident, not incident, but something recently where the person was on septic and I was trying to see what I can do to get them off without having to put the onus on them to go install a lift station and everything else. So I, I understand that as rate payers, I get, I'm a rate payer too, so I'm a customer. But it's, this is the cost of all the compliance activities that we have right now. That's why we had to raise the rates. And you look around, we're, we're, we're well below some of the other cities.
And you can't, you can't even compare us to other cities because other cities in other states, as you referred to, some of them aren't even, you know, using, they're using facilities that were, you know, outdated in the forties. And, you know, we have to be stuck that's, you know, current today technology-wise. Some of them don't even use treatment plants. They use huge ponds and so on. So, I mean, what does it cost to put that big pond in and so on? I'm just simply throwing out, these are all possibilities. Also, the, the amount of regulation and what their standards are that they have to meet. You know, there's a basic standard, it's a federal standard, but state of Florida is always a higher standard than that. So those are the problems we have.
Is there any way I could someday see the operation? You know, I'm just curious because I like to see where my money's going. You know, I just, like I said, I'm an old Boy Scout and a lot of stuff is so common sense. And I get so frustrated with politics and human beings that it's like, you don't spend more money to save, to, to save the environment. You use less and you use common sense and you don't urinate in the river or, or, or throw trash anywhere. It's, it's so much common sense and it frustrates me when I start seeing. As soon as this gentleman said regulations, I thought, okay, he said it all.
You can certainly smell it without permission, but the, to go take a tour out there, is that something that you guys do for general public or is it possible?
I'd kind of like to see the breakdown. I don't have to actually be in a treatment plant. I've been around enough of them, but, but I was just, you know, curious of, I just thought that was, as my grandfather would say, but yeah, I'm trying to put clean language in this. He's born in eighteen eighty-five. He would say something like, and I'm using the clean language, I can't believe that, you know, it costs more to go to the bathroom than it does to drink the water.
Yes, it's a cost, it costs a large amount to treat to be where we're at. There's plenty that goes into the, the system. Many, much of it's unseen and it's a good thing that a good amount of it's unseen. But there's, so you know, there's even the push to, to take the water and then make it to drinking quality again. And that we may be there in ten years to where it's going to be reused water, not just reuse going into sprinklers. It's going to be reuse going to tap just because of how significant the, you know, the amount of people that are coming into Florida and the demand of water that's out there, it's not unlimited. So there will be a point where that we're going to be, what we go down is going to be what's coming right back out, so.
Yep, City Tampa.
And that costs money. That costs money to get there. So whenever that's decided, you're going, we're going to have to have a plan in place for that.
Yeah, City Tampa already does that.
Let's drag that out as much as possible. All right, we didn't get a good answer for you, but if you will, just contact City Hall and see if they can get you out there.
Okay, well, thank you. And I got a, got a card here too. And also on that suggestion, please consider it. To me, it's just common sense, shut that timer off if there's a, you know, seventy percent plus chance of rain.
You got it. All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other speakers or questions? Yes, ma'am. You know the drill.
Maria Sutherland, nine hundred West Main. I have a question on the septic. It was created for extra revenue and my question is, by increasing the cost even by pennies, I know that originally the lure for Polk County to come haul their stuff here, it was still cheaper for them to haul it here with their gas costs, wear and tear, labor. Is that being taken into consideration? Will we be losing any of those haulers by increasing these rates?
The closest place that we believe is closed down, since that's happened, we've had influx of customers.
Customers from where?
Outside of city, outside of city.
So you have?
So Polk County, just surrounding counties.
So with the increase, is that, is that influx going to decrease and therefore decreasing the revenue?
We don't believe so. Most of the customers coming in right now are telling us kudos for doing this. We don't believe it's going to affect anybody. They have nowhere to go. So they want our services to be up and running. Where, the goal is to be open and running efficiently and more throughout the day because we have to shut down because of some of the process we still have to maintain within the treatment plant.
Isn't it true that the reason why there's no place to go is because so many places have closed down over the years?
Yes.
And it's because of the standards keep getting higher. A lot of places didn't want to meet those standards, so they?
Some of the areas were basically site-specific, so they had to do off hauling of sludge and liquids if some, some areas. So in our cases, we can send stuff back to the plant for treatment. So that was also taken into consideration as well, that it's affecting the operating cost of the treatment plant itself.
Understood.
And I had a question for Jerry. If the, if you think that you cannot restrict or the funding amounts, let's just say, that you can't give a local preference to local dumpers or haulers, can you limit the quantity?
I, I think it's the same thing, really. It's flow control, but I, you know, like I said, I'm not making a judgment from, you know, shooting from the hip. I'm just simply saying that that's where I think it's headed. But I would, if, if this council were to decide that they wanted to look at that, then I would, I would research it and see.
And then last but not least, what is the average monthly revenue? And does it have a, a time period where it's more during one month than another? I would think that it increases when we have our northern guests.
Yes, it fluctuates. I think we are averaging the revenue. We are originally, the current rate based off of the fifteen cents was, go ahead.
Yeah, we were at the January, we were taking in fifty-two thousand, two sixty-six, February forty-seven, seven oh six, March seventeen, three seventy-three. That was what, when we pulled the bills together when we were doing this whole analysis.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, any other questions on this topic? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing with the second reading of ordinance number twelve dash twenty twenty-four. Counsel, any questions, comments? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Just, just one comment. If, I mean, if Jerry could look into it to see if, if the local companies, if we are able to tailor it. I know you don't think we are, but if we could just check just to make sure.
I can do that if that's what counsel wishes.
Is anybody else?
So as I said, that we cannot, you know, if we, if we change the rate before approving it, then we'll have to go through the process again. If we approve it, we can still lower the rate at a future date.
Yeah, right. I would absolutely recommend that you pass it no matter what tonight. Otherwise, you're going to be facing a couple of months of loss, more losses with the city.
Okay.
I'm going to close the public hearing.
We did, but what the heck? We've already run almost an hour on this, so you might as well.
I'm sorry, thank you. Anne Lindsay Baker, Baker Septic Installations. Even if you vote to raise it and then could you postpone the implementation? I don't think you were firm on that. You were firm on the rate, not the implementation date. Am I correct on that?
The ordinance has to be passed. Now, if they were to make a change, that, that would have such as, you know, we're going to delay that implementation, that's a substantial change to the ordinance itself, which means it has to go back to a first reading.
I understand.
If it goes back to a first reading, that means we have to republish it so that everybody knows when the next two hearings are going to be about this, which is the two-month delay I was talking about because, you know, we have to wait until we have another bill that goes out, send that out, have them time to get to receive their bills, then have two more readings.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So Jerry, by the next meeting, do you think you would have adequate time to research the implementation rules, regs, what we can do to lower it if need be? Familiarize yourself with that?
I'll certainly try.
Okay. All right, so we'll reconsider it at our, at our next meeting for sure. But for now, is there any other questions or comments on this second reading of ordinance number twelve dash twenty twenty-four? Seeing none, do we have a motion? I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number twelve dash twenty twenty-four. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
No.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Deputy Mayor Benard?
Yes.
Mary Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number twelve, it'll be a public hearing, a second reading of ordinance number twelve, or excuse me, number thirteen dash twenty twenty-four.
Ordinance of the City of Avon Park, Florida, providing for amendments to the city's solid waste collection program, including providing for amendments to section eighty-two dash thirty-one definitions, providing for amendments to section eighty-two dash thirty-three, collection by city, to modify rates, procedures and requirements for solid waste service by the city, provide for amendments to section eighty-two dash thirty-four, preparation and placement of materials to be collected, to amend and clarify procedures required for, of customers in order to obtain pickup of solid waste, provide for amendments to section eighty-two dash thirty-seven, service charges, administrative rules, rates, to modify commercial service rates, including increases to commercial dumpster rates, provide for codification, repeal of conflicting codes, ordinances and resolutions, provide for severability of provisions, provide for scrivener's errors and provide for an effective date.
All right. This will be a public hearing. Public hearing for ordinance number thirteen dash twenty twenty-four is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on this ordinance can now do so. So you know immediate, obviously this is for our solid waste. This will be our garbage collection, this will be your yard collection, our commercial dumpsters. Any questions or comments from council?
Yeah, ma'am.
Go ahead.
I've got a question for Jason. Jason, if, if I'm right, because I don't think it happened on my first year, so this had to happen last year. The council went over extensively our solid waste and we talked about the dumpster, I'm talking about the trash, I call it the trash dumpster you push out to the road. Who did you get with to change some of these things? Because we just went over this last year and I feel as though I'm wasting my time. And the reason why I'm asking this is because I noticed that you put in here on page, well, first of all, who, who did you get with when you, when you came to this decision on when this was changed? Some of this was changed. Who did you get with? You, go ahead.
Well, I, just, just the whole budget process, Melody and I have worked hand in hand. So we've, we spoke about it and it, this came up when I first got here. We went over utility rates, went over solid waste rates, went over the different rate structures. And I took a look and seen where we were and when the last time was that, that we had the increases was that one as well, two thousand, I think they actually lowered the rates, right? So there were some, some lowered rates and that's where I put up in front of council and showed that three years where it's almost, it's basically been a million dollars where...
Year in the red.
It's, it's in the red. It's been where revenues have been under expenses and it just continues to climb. And this past year, we had to try to move money around as much as possible and then ultimately did we pull from general fund, ultimately pull from the general fund, which is your tax base, and to offset the cost. And costs just continue to go up because of the rates and everything else. There was, the, the rates were based off of what it cost, not even putting in, you know, looking into future considerations, trying to build the fund. It was like a zero-based cost of where the budget was and it was an Excel spreadsheet. So whatever I put the rates, it already factored it in and then it came out there of where we were for our rates.
So, so Jason, financially, this city is doing so bad that if somebody, if they lose or their garbage container gets stolen, we're going to make them pay for it? Because I don't know if you was at the last meeting, my garbage container was stolen and I rode around for a whole week looking for it.
No, I don't.
And, and when we went over it last year, this council, mayor put it on the table and all of us agreed to it, that if your container was stolen, that you could call the police department, get an incident number that it happened and call it out there to the maintenance department and they would replace it. So I'm going to ask you, this city is doing that bad financially, that if somebody come and steal their trash can, we're going to make them pay for it?
No, I didn't, I don't think we've ever...
Yeah, it's been changed. It's been changed. And that's why I said, I feel like I'm wasting my time.
I don't, I don't know where you're saying that has been changed. I didn't, I didn't, if, if you, if you damaged it yourself or you, you did something and you lost it, whatever it may be, you have to come forward. If you give a police report, I have not, since I've been here, charged a resident for a garbage can myself. I have not.
I get that part, Jason, but you want us to prove this tonight and it, it has been taken out.
Where's, where's?
Page five, seven. Page five or seven at the top, number seven, the customer should bear the cost to replace lost, stolen or damaged garbage carts, except that garbage cart in need of replacement due to normal wear and tear.
Okay.
We, we had already went over this, so that's why I'm asking.
It may have been an oversight, but it wasn't intentional, geez.
Well, I don't know. It just seemed like it's...
It's an oversight that you caught. Great.
I, I would, I haven't, I want, I want individuals to be responsible for the garbage cans, like for the, the storm. We ask for people to put the garbage cans back. The thing is, is like, if, if it's lost and it goes, the, the fund is the one that has to pay for it. The fund's the one that has to pay for the garbage can, not, not the department, not, it's the fund, right? So the sand, the solid waste division, when we have to buy more, it doesn't, doesn't matter who's the one, what happened, you know, we, almost every single time that I've seen it come in front of me or, because I haven't said, charged one individual, say, no, I don't believe you, but that's why, end up if they come together, come forward with that, we're not, we're not, we haven't been charging them. And I, I agree with what the mayor said, that, that should come out, but if you want, you can strike it, I guess, maybe. I don't know how it would go.
But it wasn't an oversight, right? Because there was a lot of...
It was an oversight. Is anyone opposed to not replacing a trash can if it's stolen? Do you have a police report?
I think we, I think we have well documented it as far as us discussing this, is if it's, if it was stolen and a police report is made, that the, the customer is not charged. We've talked about it at length. So as far as number seven, if that word stolen, which I think we should put in, if you're going to fix that, then you need to put with a documented police report. So we'll just clarify some simple language, but I feel like we've all been above board and on the same page as far as if somebody comes and steals your cart, you don't get charged for it.
Yeah, he just need to go back and put it back in the way we had it initially.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
No, I believe, I believe it was discussed also.
So if you make the motion, the motion for first reading with those changes and then we'll have a second reading, this doesn't have to go on the bills, so it's not going to delay except one meeting.
Okay.
This is the second reading.
No, but it don't have to be a first reading, which means like that another meeting, so a second...
So you think that's a substantive change?
I think it's a substantive change. You're going to basically remove the whole section on that.
No, just right here, paragraph number seven.
What?
On page five, it's one, it's one word.
Okay. I just simply say, you know, whenever you have rate increases or rate ordinances, I always take the most conservative route because what's, what's the result if you, if you're wrong and it is substantive issue? That means you have to refund or everything that made the, after the ordinance was invalid.
So to me, it's the safest conservative route, which is what I do, is to call a first reading. We don't have to publish it like, in the, in the bills, like we do other things, so it's only a delay of a month. Uh, I think that's not much considering the safety of aspect of having refund money that we collected with some, for statute limitations.
If, if we collected money on a stolen garbage can, right? I mean, the, the reason why, the reason being, and it's, this was, the budget was based off of our revenues coming in with the money that we have. If we don't have that, then the cost is gonna be the cost, no matter what. It's, it's going to, someone's gonna have to pay for, for the, the seven dollars, the lack thereof, for a month. So, which would be just roughly, it's like forty, forty-two, I think, forty-two thousand dollars of lost revenue for delaying it a month.
So would we still have an issue if we don't collect any money on stolen carts, like Jason is saying? Or is it any money collected, period?
No, I, it's, changing the ordinance is my concern. You change the ordinance substantively, you have to read it as a first reading, so that you have, you know, because if you made amendments to it, you can do all the amendments you want in the first reading, but when you're second reading, if you make changes that are substantive, you, you have to go back to a first reading.
May I make a recommendation? Can we adopt this as is tonight, and then bring back a subsequent ordinance to start over again to change that one language so that we don't lose out on forty-some thousand dollars? I, I don't think there's gonna be that many people reporting a stolen can in a month.
Absolutely.
That's to me.
Okay. Anyone opposed to that?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, so you need a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number thirteen, or excuse me, we can just approve it as is, I'm sorry. So we just need a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number thirteen dash twenty twenty four.
So move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Oh, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions?
Just for clarification, did you close the public hearing?
The public hearing for ordinance number thirteen dash twenty twenty four is closed.
Thank you, sir.
And we have a motion and a second on the table. So please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
No.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Benard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, at our next meeting, we will begin the process to remove the stolen and/or change that language.
Agreed.
All right. Item number thirteen, this will be the first reading for ordinance number fourteen dash twenty twenty four to consider city councilman's health insurance.
An ordinance to amend the city code, section two dash thirty-three of the city code, increasing council pay and allowing participation by council members in city insurance program. Provide for conflicts and severability, provide for inclusion in the code, and effective date. First reading.
All right. Anyone wishing to speak for ordinance number fourteen dash twenty twenty four? Seeing none, we have any questions or anything?
Um, I just had a question on this one. Um, I thought a couple of weeks ago, again, when we were going over this, that the insurance was gonna decrease.
Did our insurance for the city increase or decrease this year?
It increased, however, it decreased when we got our final numbers. So initially, it did increase, and then when Denise, you know, worked through with the carrier, it decreased from, I think we had budgeted eighteen percent, and it was down to seven, I think.
It raised seven percent?
It, so we initially budgeted...
From what it was last year?
Yes, it was like eighteen percent, but it really raised seven percent.
Okay. So are these numbers in conjunction with what it went down to?
Yes.
So to be clear, what the city is paying for health insurance this year is seven percent higher than what it was last year?
Yes.
Okay. There's your answer.
Nine point five percent.
Nine point five on health insurance. Okay. Any other questions on this?
No.
Health insurance. Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve, uh, ordinance number fourteen dash twenty twenty four, please.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Oh, second.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Benard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number fourteen, this will be resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty-three.
A resolution of the city council of Avon Park, Florida, providing for user fees from persons, for persons and entities requiring the use of city employee services and outside consulting fees related to property or development. Provide that outside consulting fees are, are in addition to city employee fees, provide for severability, conflict, scrivener's errors, and provide an effective date.
Okay, anyone wishing to, uh, brief us on this?
Sure, I can, ma'am, thank you. Um, you may recall back in July, uh, your code enforcement supervisor prevented a very, presented a very large matrix on the fees that were charged by the surrounding jurisdictions for developers or homeowners, or anyone that needed to use the city's fees for, or the city's services for generating like lien letters or zoning verification letters. He came up with a cost matrix, and I remember watching in your budget, um, videos that you went ahead and conditionally approved this and wanted it brought forward again for actual codification. So that's what's presented before you.
Okay. Were there any changes made between the last discussion and now?
No.
All right, any questions? None, no questions?
No.
There's some people kinda sitting behind me a little bit, so if I don't, if I ask for questions, and you wanna ask one, and I don't acknowledge it, please speak up. All right, if there's no questions, we'll be looking for a motion.
Uh, one, one change here, looks to me like number seven should read the fees described in one through six above, do not include additional fees for outside attorneys, and so on. Does annexation sum? Do chart, do cost more? Apparently something got missed there.
Okay. Anyone wishing to make a motion?
With that change.
With that change?
So move.
Okay. Did you make a motion?
Yes, I did.
All right, Brittany made a motion.
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second, last call for questions. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Benard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number fifteen, retroactive approval of the emergency repair by Atlantic Pipe Services. Jason, you wanna go over this?
Give it to Joseph, the utility manager.
All right, so just a briefing on the background of the liner issue from APMS, APS, sorry. There was a, we have the dates. No.
Sorry, we can't pull up either the, but we couldn't download, so...
The beginning of August, um, we were doing some work across US twenty-seven. At that time, we discovered a manhole that had been buried for many years. We, we opened that manhole, we saw that there was surcharging in the system, uh, so we went downstream. The next manhole had more surcharging, so there was some type of clog. At that point, it crossed under US twenty-seven, US Highway twenty-seven. We saw the surcharging in that main, we tried to, so then we went to the next main, which is in front of our Public Works manhole, sorry. Um, there it was dry, so we knew that it was a clog under US twenty-seven. Uh, we do have some equipment in-house, the vac con with, uh, GroPro camera system on it. Uh, we got it in X amount of feet, and it stopped. We could see some type of blockage. Went back across US twenty-seven, dived in that side, again, blockage. So our camera wasn't giving us good pictures because of just of what it is. So we reached out to APS, and they were able to come in and, on, under emergency basis, and start cutting the liner, um, to clear the surcharging. Probably nobody wants to hold it, but this is part of the liner. They're estimated about three feet a day. Basically, they come in with a little drill with a round bit on it, and you actually see the marks, see some of the areas where it was going in. Um, this was part of the collapsed liner. So it's a slow, tedious process.
So I, I also reached out just to method, the methodology behind it. So they have to do some cutting, and then they have to send a truck to, to go and pull all that out. I was originally thinking that maybe I can supplement and use our vacuum truck versus theirs, but if we had a call out and we had to go somewhere, then that operation is gonna be bad. Uh, it, it continued on, they did work for, it was intermittently, so they worked like three days, or they'd go on, and, and, um, they would come back, they had other things that, because they were on an emergency basis for us, but they had to push some of their other projects out. When they came in, um, they gave us a, basically a time and material rate. We looked at it, we thought it was, you know, we didn't think it was bad. It's, when you ask the, the pipe companies to come in and specialize work, there isn't many that are able to do this. So the fact that they were able to assist us really helped out. Plus, in the time period, we're getting into storm season and everything else, and where this sat, this sits in a, in a drainage basin off the side, and is a direct connection that goes under to Lake Glenada, goes kinda underneath, uh, South Florida State College, twenty-seven and South Florida State College. So we wanted at best to try to eliminate a SSO. I wasn't necessarily afraid of a SSO just based off the quantity from that, but if we did get water into the manholes because of the location of it, then there's a good chance that it would build up, then cause an SSO. And an SSO is an SSO, whether it's, has a little bit of so, uh, sanitary sewer or a lot. And then basically, that opens up another can of worms with FDEP, and then you have to go back and explain and do your remediation. What could you have done to, to prevent this? And so when we looked at it, we did our best, we wanted to get our flow. We didn't, because of how it was, we didn't know the extent of it. And cut a little bit, and then another section was bad, and cut a little bit, you just couldn't go and, and say, just say it was like one small area. You couldn't run it in, just as an example, say it's a three-hundred-foot pipe. We run it in this way, one fifty, the other one, one twenty, and say, okay, there's a thirty-foot section that's gotta get cut out. We didn't quite know, because those, there were different collapses along the way. And this wasn't from a collapse, that it was, uh, something that we did, at least as far as we know. It might have been FDOT, who knows? But, um, and this is something that usually does not happen. But, and, and if it were like an issue, and they can get in and then put another liner, and then kinda blow it up in like a balloon and push it out, that's usually how they deal with those situations. But I, I checked with other companies and, and researched to see if this is really, I was like, is it really two to three feet a day? And that guy, the, another gentleman, he said, if that, if that, it's just, it's a long process. And I said, well, do you have, do you have that capability? He said, no, very few people do. So, um, this is where we are, there still is a small section that needs to get removed. On our pipelining, we're looking to do a ITB, uh, where we can have our lining prices up front, and then we've already budgeted for it, and just come back, show that we met the procurement measures, and we're gonna do this amount. But there, that particular didn't, um, those rates for that, we just, that, that was their standard rate. We negotiate, I called them back, I negotiated a, uh, a, a five percent discount, and they also didn't continue to, um, charge us mobilization fees, fuel recovery fee. It was just a one-time basis, where they could have went in and kept doing it. They work with us, and here we are, hopefully we can get this taken care of. Just, it's been a headache, but our primary goal was to eliminate the SSOs.
What would have been a realistic cost to replace the pipe?
So you would have had to engineer that, and you would have had to put a new, likely, put a new manhole, because you would have had to take it out or go into some kind of bypass pumping operation. And there's, there's a lot of ifs. We thought about that, and there's, there's other things that we're thinking about as possibly, because I don't like the location of those. And we're, we're looking at sending it, just sending those group of businesses that are on it, and sending it back towards the plant, but pressurized. So we are looking at that. If I can get that faster than maybe this other lining job, maybe, maybe I do that, and then just completely get out of the drainage ditch, because you don't wanna be where water collects, because we're also, there's inflow, INIs, inflow and infiltration. You don't want the inflow coming in. Because that, that's what really, uh, pushes your, your plant to the extremes once you start getting all that storm water into your sewer system. That's why we're, we do so many tasks to try to prevent that.
I would just be interested to see what the life of a new pipe is also versus what a liner is, you know? If there's, if a liner lasts half as long, or if it lasts the same length of time, I don't know.
They're estimated fifty years on a liner.
Okay.
Yes.
And a new pipe is?
Fifty years.
Okay.
My only question is, the picture that says the liner was installed backwards, that wasn't on us?
We don't know who put this liner, and we have no records of us doing this work. So we, we believe it happened when they widened twenty-seven, twenty, twenty-five years ago. We're assuming when they put this in.
We just have so few connections on that particular pipe that it come to light until now?
And we did, like Jason said, we sat down with an engineering firm, and, um, we went over some of the rough costs for grab, new gravity, um, and also a pressurized system.
I see.
They're both very extensive, especially gravity.
So just as a minor technical, this, this was already approved, and, um, um, you're, we're seeking to have the, the council approve it, right? It's a, it's a ratification, it'd be the, the, the vote, actually, rather than a retroactive approval. Since it's already been approved, it has to be ratified by the council.
It wasn't approved by the, this was an emergency collapse, so it, like, that, that amount, sorry, did I?
No, it's, no, I understand that, that, that it was an emergency, and, and, yeah, you can approve that, and, um, at an emergency basis. It's just that, now it's a ratification of that approval, as opposed to another approval.
Okay. Any, any questions on this?
I, I do, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Um, Jason, have we used this company before? I know it was an emergency, but have we used them before?
Uh, yes, we have. We used them on Memorial for the inspection and the cutting of that main.
Okay. Um, help me out, you know, you, you guys do this kind of work, you know, all day, every day, you know? It cut a truck. What does it do? It cuts a pipe?
Yes, that's actually what cut this portion. And it comes in with a, a crawler, looks like a cart with some wheels on it. They go in with the cutter wheel, they go in with the camera truck behind it, they've gotta pull it out, they bring, and then they have to send their other, their jetter truck, back truck in, and they pull all that material back.
So when you say they put all that material back, they pulling it out with a vacuum?
Yeah, with like the same thing we have as a vac con, a little like Jason said.
It's water. It's, it's water, it's high-pressure water, so it sends a stream down. It has a, a large amount that comes out the, the backside of the, the jetting nozzle, and it makes its way down. And then when it goes down, it, it gets past the debris, and then when you, the, the truck pulls it back, it's just like a wall of wa, it's like you spraying with a hose, but it's just a wall of water pushing everything back towards the truck, and then the trucks has the, the vacuum nozzle ends, sucking out all the debris that comes back.
And why didn't they, what happened that they didn't finish the job, that they got to come back?
The, uh, the manhole upstream, the one that was located, um, has some issues. So it's allowing sand to come in, infiltration. So it's actually allowing stuff to come in, and it's causing that main to block up.
And that's not good?
No.
So why didn't they finish the job? Why are they gonna come back if that's not a good thing?
Because they, we have to be able to fix the block prior, and then they come back and cut the other few feet out. I don't know what they, I think they estimate four to five feet out.
Okay.
So there's some, uh, manhole rehabilitation that we're working on right now.
Okay. And this, um, this amount, um, that the remaining section, it said not to exceed twelve grands. So who, who, who quote is that? Yours or the company?
That, that was based off what they've been charging, it was the rate that we had, and four to five, based off of doing about two to three feet a day. So just put the numbers, and then I multiplied it by two, the daily cost, and that's what I, I came up with.
Any other questions? All right, so we need a motion to ratify the prior approval of emergency repair by Atlantic Pipe Services.
So move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I second it.
We have a motion and a second, last call for questions. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Benard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number sixteen, this will be resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty-three. I'm number 16, it's to be City of Avon Park Utilities Subordination for some Sun Pure Road right away. Let's also be approving me to have the authority to sign.
Yeah, so, as you recall, this came up once before, and I said I had a problem with the form that they had regard to the subordination, and it wasn't absolutely clear that they were gonna pay for us, you know, if the, if they had to widen the road or repay or whatever, and it caused us to have to move that small section, that, that they would pay for that. And right now, we're in an easement, so asking us to subordinate our easement right to their, their roadway. Now, the county is very interested in this getting done, and the state's interested in getting it done. It's a small section. I can say there's not any risk, but what they did is they backed up to another subordination of city utility interest. It reads a little better than what they have now. But they, they said they couldn't change the forms, you know, they had to use what they had. I agree with that, but then we try to cooperate with FDOT and the county as much as we can, and this is a small section, so I didn't think it was gonna be that much, but I'm not gonna say it's not a risk. It's just, you know, not substantial risk.
This is also, we can get a red light at that intersection. Okay, is there any questions on this subordination?
So, so why was the other thing included then, Jerry, the, the one from Hardy County?
That's the one they backed up to, the one that did in 2005 with the Zofa Springs that I represent.
So they're using that one, they're just not changing the form?
Well, they didn't, the new form is jumbled up, in my opinion. They, I, I know they wanted to have it read that they would pay for it, but it just, based on, I don't know, grammar, that's how we say, it doesn't read right. And this, the other one does read better, in my opinion.
So as far as our rights, we are going based on this one from Hardy County, as far as our rights to the city?
It's not 100%, like I said, and, you know, but they don't change their forms, unfortunately. And would I like to have them change it? Yeah, absolutely. But it's a decision as to whether we're gonna move forward. They won't build the road or do that section of improvement so that you have the light, unless we agree to subordinate our utility interest to that section, because that's what they want.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the City of Avon Park Utilities Subordination Sun Pure Road right away.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'm number 17, this will be ratification of the ASME union agreement. Ms. Kelly, I see your name there, if you wanted to brief us on this.
Sure. I'm sorry, Denise's name was on there.
I think Denise's name's on it, yeah.
You threw me for a loop, but.
Item number 17, I see Danielle Kelly.
That's okay.
Go ahead, Denise. Whoever knows about this, jump in there.
We both do. I just wanna point out that Friday, the union did ratify the agreement, so it's coming to you pre-approved.
Awesome.
Okay, so ASME has agreed to ratify this. It's up for ratification by the council at this point. We haven't had a ratified contract since 2022. We're looking at implementing this for the 2024 to 2027 year. There's a few things that have changed in here that are notable, outside of some verbiage changes and like table of contents, page, page number changes, things like that. One of the things in regards to, let's see, Article 7, Section 2 for laundering. We've agreed to provide working washers and dryers out at the wastewater treatment plant for the employees to use, rather than take their clothing home and, and put it in their own washers because of the sewage and things like that. They were happy to have that. Also, same section, Section 5 for this shoe allowance. We agreed to increase that from $100 to $150 annually, so that they can purchase their shoes. And then if you go over to Article 10, where it talks about holidays, we incorporated just some verbiage to state that the Christmas Eve holiday would be observed as Highlands County Clerk of the Court observes it. And then we added the verbiage to cover the longevity day for the personal day, to give employees every five years. That wasn't in here. Council had already approved that, so we incorporated it into their contract. And then, I think there's just two more areas here. Article 19, Section 7 in regards to call-out and standby pay. We added a sentence, it didn't really define how quickly an employee had to respond if called out. And a sentence was added that employees who are called in to work from standby status shall report to work within a reasonable period of time. We wanted to add that because there was a situation that came up where someone was on call, they were fishing with their child and came in half a day later to try to tend to something. So we had to put something in there that would kinda substantiate that, when you're called, you need to come in right away. And the last one, Article 20 in regards to wages and longevity. This is where the union agreed, per council's approval, of the 3% increase for COLA on October 1st of this year. And then any future increases will be subject to review annually for that. And that was pretty much it.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes, Ms. Denise, Article 19, number, Section 7, the one that you say when employees, employees who are called in. In this department, when they're called in, they're, everybody is on standby? At, at, no? So how would they know? If they're on the Fish Creek, how would they know that they got called in?
Well, they're, they, they rotate out who's on call in the department, so the person knows that this week, I'm on call.
Okay.
So I need to be readily available. They carry the, the on-call phone, so once that goes off, they need to come in.
Any other questions?
I, I do, I have one too. The employees who are called, called in to work from a standby status must report within a reasonable period of time. Do you think maybe we should designate what a reasonable amount of time is? That may differ from a supervisor to an employee.
I, I did put that out there when this was being negotiated, but there was some pushback to that, and this is the verbiage that the union, and the union employees were comfortable with.
So if they come the next day, that's reasonable? I'm just asking.
It's, it's as soon as, yeah, it's.
I guess what I'm saying, Denise, is your reasonable time and my reasonable time?
I agree. I wanted to put in within two hours, so, but that, that would, they didn't wanna.
So then, they're not gonna have any kind of disciplinary action taken against them if they do show up six, seven, eight, seven hours later?
I think it would have to be on a case-by-case basis to see what the reason was. If they were in the hospital, hadn't they got called out or something, I think that, that's different, but if they were out fishing and just wanted to finish out the day fishing, that would be different. I think you'd have to look at that.
Boat broke down, can't get back.
Yeah, boat broke down.
Well, I don't have a problem with all the other things. I do think we need to designate a reasonable period of time. I really do. Because like I said, from a supervisor's reasonable time to an employee's reasonable time, it's very different.
And, and I do understand that. I just wanna, I wanna put out there that we've been negotiating this contract for a year and a half, and this one item for the union was an issue. And if we, if we wanna change it now, we're gonna have to go back to the table with them when negotiating.
So is it possible to put standards as far as reasonable time in, in your employee handbook versus this union contract?
We, we can, but the contract supersedes. For the union employees, they're, they're bound by what's in the contract. Takes precedent over the PRR.
Especially if they made a point of the fact that they didn't wanna have a date, time in there.
Yes, that was, that was a sticking point for them.
What happens if we do not agree with the union contract?
Then it goes back to the table for negotiation, and everything is opened back up again.
What if you don't come to a conclusion then? And it goes to impasse?
It goes to impasse and that whole process again.
And then what happens if it goes to impasse?
Then, then it's up to council, and we could take it back to how it was and say, that's it, we're done.
I agree with that.
So is the council willing to go to that point? Because if you're not willing to go to that point, then you might as well not talk about it.
Well, I would ask the supervisors then, how many times have you ever been faced with this? Have you ever been faced with somebody saying, I'll come in, and they don't show up until four or five hours later? I mean, is this really a problem to the supervisors?
Time, I have had this personally happen, trying to be as vague as possible. We had an issue one afternoon, I think it was a weekend, Saturday. The guy on call was in Miami.
I'm sorry?
The guy, the guy that was on call was in Miami.
Oh.
So if it was a 12-inch main break on Memorial, that road's gone, the sidewalk's gone, God knows what else is gone.
Was he written up?
Yes.
Why? He was in Miami, you know how many hours it takes?
He's on call, he's paid, he's compensated one hour a day and then two hours for each weekend day.
Oh, he goes on call, okay.
With the call phone. And he was unable to get, and then what also happened is the car broke down. So it was a miss.
So is there no?
Other people are coming out to help. Everything starts moving really fast.
Is there no definition of what being on standby means, like, within a certain radius or anything like that?
So I, I wanna add, I mean, we, the purpose, the whole purpose of standby is quick response. Like, when, when the water's out and people are in the shower and they want action, that's, that's the purpose of standby, so us as, as a director, as a manager, we don't, we don't have to go through a whole list of people to call. We know, once we call, that people are coming. And then we usually are coming too, so when, when we get those. The, the whole purpose is for them to respond quickly. It's two hours, we, we kinda hope that they get there within the hour, especially this is a smaller, many of the employees are closer by, but it's, it's a reasonable amount of time to where you can still live your regular life and, you know, go out to dinner and whatnot, but, you know, say you had to leave the restaurant, go home, change and come in, you should be able to do that within an hour, an hour and a half. And we, we understand, but we don't, it does affect us if it's just open-ended, and because the employee can basically, since, based off of that, just take their time. Does it happen? It's happened to me, not here, but in other places, frequently where they decided, and there was, there was other actions you could take if you don't meet that timeline. But we're not there really sitting with a stopwatch. We're hoping that people show up, but it is something in case that does happen that we can utilize. It's in black and white.
Okay. Speaker, give your name and address to the record, please.
Dolores Miranda.
In the microphone, please.
I'm sorry, yep. Hi, Dolores Miranda, 4051 East Aubman Range Road, Avon Park, Florida.
Yes, ma'am.
I have spent 20 years of my life being on call, and I know how to address this situation. What do y'all do for training? Like, when you're training your, your employees to be on call? And, and I'm not being, I'm, I'm just offering, like, is there anything in writing? Is there a video, do's and don'ts?
To answer your question, no. What we do is we field train.
Okay, I would be happy to send you a video of what we did, Orange County Fire Rescue, because we had, we had that problem. And, and really, the only way to address it is at the supervisor level. I'm not so sure language in the contract would help, but like a video, and then something in writing. They sign that they receive the training, they understand the training. And it is hard to define exactly what that timeframe should be, but when you tell them stuff like, eh, you're not allowed to drink while you're on call, you know, and, and I'm just, I could, I'd be happy to send anybody a video.
That's fine. Yes, ma'am, I'll get.
So who should I send it to?
Send it to me.
Do you have a card?
Not on me, it's in my truck. Sorry.
I can send it to Chrissy? Okay. Of course, you're gonna have to adjust it, because it's all fire department stuff.
Yes, ma'am, we appreciate that.
But we had that, it was a significant problem for us, and we addressed it with training and documentation.
Thank you.
And I think, and I think off that, even, based off just the contract, even if we had training and documentation, if they came back and they had, and it was conflicted that time, whatever the documentation is, and they didn't show up, they'd go to the union contract, and that's gonna supersede anything else.
Yeah, if you wanna enforce it, you have to change the contract, period, so. Is the council willing to go to impasse over it? If the answer is yes, then we simply say we want that change, and that's the end of it. They'll take it or not. If they don't, then we'll go ahead and pass.
Just one question. So who would determine whether or not, I mean, if, if the supervisor says it was not in a reasonable time, the employee says that, yes, it was, per the contract, what happens? They sue the city, basically? I mean, we can, because we can still take disciplinary action against the employee, correct?
If we do a disciplinary action. If we do a disciplinary action, the employee could always grieve it through the grievance process with the union.
Okay.
My concern is, why is this such a big sticking point for them? It seems like it's something that allows them to decide what a reasonable time is, and it could be on a daily basis, it could be on a personal basis, it could be whatever somebody feels like on, on the time that they're on the call-out list. I, I think we need to have some definition in the contract.
So is anyone wanting to pass it as is, or does everyone want to have a change?
Change. I'd like a change.
All right, sounds like we got a majority who wants a change, so do we need to make a motion to deny it?
We need to make a motion to deny.
Okay, so do we have a motion to deny?
Motion to deny.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any questions? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
For rebuttal, to go back to the count, to the union, what do we need to do there for language, Jerry?
As you have requested, I don't get involved in this union contracts at all, so I would say that you need to contact Brian Coje, your labor counsel on that.
Okay, who will be contacting Brian first?
I will.
You will be?
Yep.
Are you comfortable with the language that we're trying to seek?
Oh, yeah, I wanted that in there initially.
So do we need to determine, or is that what Brian's gonna do as to what a reasonable time would constitute?
That's what Brian would help.
That's what he's gonna do?
Yeah, Brian would help to define reasonable, yeah. I think we were looking at two hours as a, as a reasonable timeframe initially.
If it is two hours, is two hours acceptable? Or you want it quicker?
90 minutes.
90 minutes?
Yeah, I mean, we would like an hour, but I think fair is 90 minutes. You don't know what the situation is. I think it's fair all around. I mean, again, we're not necessarily there with stopwatches. We're all trying to go. We just want people to show up as fast as possible to help the residents and the customers of Avon Park.
I have a question. How often are they on call?
We have somebody on call 24/7. We actually have water call and sewer call, so we have two guys on, and then we also have a on-call operator for the treatment plants.
So how often is your average employee on call?
Every six weeks.
Okay, for like 24 hours?
For seven days a week.
Seven days. So one employee would be on call every six weeks? He'd have an on-call schedule?
Yes.
Okay, so then, they would know, they should know that when it's their week, I can't go out to dinner. I can't go out of town to go shopping. I'm on call. If I do go out to dinner, maybe I need to carry my work clothes in the car with me, so if I have to leave, then I have to leave now. So I think an hour to hour and a half is pretty reasonable.
Do all the employees live within the county?
Yes. I mean, we could, we could sit back and figure out the furthest employee from our department. If we needed to, I don't think anybody's outside of 20 minutes.
Yeah, is anybody opposed to 90 minutes?
No.
90 minutes. All right, anything else on the subject? Seeing none. Item number 18, Hurricane Milton debris pickup.
Before Jason jumps in, I just wanna let you know that Florida Department of Transportation completed their first pass of debris pickup on the state roads, and at, that was as of Friday. They're gonna make another pass beginning today for the rest of this week on the state roads, and then that's it. They're not gonna do any more.
They're not going to do any more pickups. But I think Jason has additional information from the county side.
Okay.
Who is that that's not going to do?
F.D.
Oh, D.O.T., okay.
Yeah.
Whenever you're ready.
Yeah. It's been a busy day. I mean, it's been hard. I'm just looking to see if I got any additional email here that I can reference from the Bob, I think it's Dierdorf. So they are looking at, I'll say our current operation right now. Our current operation, what we've been doing is picking up bulk waste. So we've been doing that, picking it up, just I wanted to make sure we didn't have that or the co-mingling of piles or get to the point where the people are going out and then it gets closer and closer and all of a sudden they start throwing on and it becomes a problem. Where we do have our door hat, door tag hangers that we can go out and put on the door and say, "You co-mingled the debris, please separate it." We, the last call that I had, I wasn't here Friday. I was requesting to see when they were going to be picking up. They started in, I guess, the Placid Lakes, the trailer park that got hit by the tornadoes. So those areas that were the greatest impacted and is impacting the quality of life, they were, they had their debris contractors that are picking that up. From what I understand, it's been a task for them to get people here because of everyone is in Tampa and throughout all the debris in the southeastern United States picking up. So they had had five trucks at the time that were coming over here to do work. We continued, we originally started because it was a small amount and then said, "We can take care of this." But more and more debris started coming out. We had another phone call with the county and then everyone had the same feeling. We all felt like we could handle it with the amount of debris that was on the ground. But the amount of trees that were getting cut and generated, then we said, you know, it's going to be more than we can handle. Because even, we were getting a couple of blocks, the next day we'd come back and it would be back out there again. And then we just couldn't, we couldn't advance. So the county, the manager and I, we went to a county meeting. It was established that they were going to get contractors in. They were going to put up a map that was going to say where they were, the areas that they took care of already and picked up debris. And I had recommended that they pick up everything, even though they said, "No, we'll go and pick up the tree debris first and then come back and get the CND, like whatever aluminum or whatever came over there." And I said, "You're still going to have people that don't quite know that, yeah, they've been through, but they're still going to put tree debris out there." So I said, "It's better you just make an area clear, you say it's clear and then that's it." We do have in Avon Park, out by the gun range area, there is a, it's a disaster debris management site. That's already determined, that's already put in by the county and that's approved by the state through DEP. That area, in order to start taking debris, they need to be set up with, you know, where everything's going to go. They need to have like a scissor lift where they can look into the trucks. They need to have the placards with the yardage and everything else that says what's going out there. That is a temporary site. That's not a final disposition site. So basically, it's supposed to go there, get ground up, made into a smaller, easy to shift and go somewhere else. Last week, they said they were going to go out and once they were around the areas that got hit hard with the tornadoes in Lake Placid, then they were going to disperse out and then try to get some people into the surrounding cities. But they requested that we provide assistance. I said, "I can definitely provide assistance with one truck and then maybe what I can do is get, have two trucks on the tree debris week and then do one truck during bulk week that I can assist them with the pickup." I also looked into how much it costs to get another grapple truck and that's probably going to be around the $12,000 if I rent it plus a one-time fee. And it's pretty significant, so it's going to determine that, you know, we can assist, but they need to get that debris management site set up now. Or if directed to just start picking up tree debris, we can go to where we've been dumping as of late.
Did they give you an update as to when they're going to open that site?
They didn't give me an update. I came back, when I talked to them, I followed up, I called them up and I said, "Any update?" "No, no update yet."
You talked to them today or yesterday?
No, I didn't have a chance today. I've been caught up with some things.
I mean, that's probably going to be the best option is to try to push them to go ahead and open it so that we can start helping. Otherwise, you know, we're not going to get reimbursed for all that money. It's going to get substantial quick.
Yeah, they would have their contractors picking up. We would just provide the staff and the truck. So guesstimate around $300, but we're dumping. We're not going to get any money for what we dump. We're going to just get for our forced labor for what we had out there. The county, because they're the ones that are doing the monitoring and everything else, they would get whatever came back to them. How, there was a sticking point where they were talking, I had a note, it's basically with reciprocity and how they go about doing the contract. And I felt it was more along the lines of a mutual aid agreement. But they were looking at saying a separate contract to where we're working for the county, providing the services. So however it is they decide to do it, it's not like the cost of utilizing our own truck isn't a significant cost for, you know, just helping out and showing that we're out there, getting two trucks out. But it's going to take, you know, 10 trucks working to really put a dent into what's out there.
Okay.
Do we not have any contractors in this area, maybe not in this area, that would be willing, we could contract them to come in to help? I mean, because when I talk to people out in the public, they have this thought in their head, well, the city and the county are saying, "Well, that's not, I'm not touching that. You touch it, I'm not touching it, you get it, I'm not getting it, you get it." They're angry, they're getting angry because this stuff is growing up, the grass is growing up on the sides of the mounds. They didn't scoot it out of the road all the way and people are getting their cars scratched by now, dead branches that are even more rough. I have a place over by me on Kendall where they lost, I don't know how many trees, because it's taller than my car. I feel like I'm going through the forest. It's tall, it takes up almost the whole block. So I just, we need to do something. It's been almost a month.
The county is-
And we still had no answers.
The county has not denied responsibility for picking it up. If you, during the first part, like we can, we did our documentation, there's what's considered the first push, so we get things off the street. We tried to take and we were doing that during the first push. We can get reimbursed for that. All these contracts, like the contractor you're talking about, these have to be competitively bid. Everything has to be in place, has to be pre-approved. It's not exclusive to this storm or this area. And there's other places, like where I was down in the Miami area where you were getting outbid for services from other people because they were getting a higher amount through their contract. So the county said, "Yes, they're requesting assistance." I think they have two debris contractors, it's Tetra Tech and, did you recall the other one?
No, Tetra Tech.
It was, it almost sounded like an engineering name, but there was another company that was there. And they were saying, "Yeah, we can get people out, but it's just, you're in the waiting game." So while we're in the waiting game, if need be, if we need to start putting a dent, then we can start picking up and taking debris out and utilizing two trucks and trying to get the areas, you know, whether we pick by a certain section or put one in the northeast corner, the other one in the southwest, whatever we decide, and just go from there. But I was just really wanted to pick up our bulk as much as possible. So that wasn't co-mingled in with the debris and that it didn't look as bad. Because it will look just as bad if we don't pick up that bulk.
Right. I agree with you 100%.
Is this something separate then, the DOT saying they're only going to do state roads? Is this two separate?
It is two separate pickups, yes.
Phillips and Jordan was the other company. It's Phillips and Jordan and Tetra Tech.
And Bob is the boss on this?
He's, he is for the solid waste landfill. So we did discuss in there, or I'll say on the discussion, but we are, like how they go about opening the landfill for people to go drop it off. There was an order from the governor. How we go about just tackling this. It's, we're waiting on the contractors. It's not, I think, if we just start going, trying to put a dent in it and show that we're doing everything we can until the cavalry arrives, then we can go about it that way if that's what the council decides. But we're not going to get reimbursed where we're going to be taking it. It's not a tremendous cost. You know, when I say tremendous, it's, you know, it's around, it can be anywhere from $70 to $100 a truckload or something like that, depending on how much we smash it down and everything else.
And Jason, and if we did it ourselves and it was dependent on the truckload, how many truck, estimate? How many truckloads do you think it would take? I'm just estimating.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I think we'd probably be picking up, and the thing is, is it's everything that other people bring out. Hopefully, a good amount of people already got their debris out. But, I mean, from what I see out there, it can probably take us three months or more to pick all that up. I mean, if we concentrate on sections, then what I can do, if I do a section, then I can take that and kind of say, "It took me one month to do this quarter of the city." So my guess is four months, or three additional months to do the remaining quarters. I can do that to get a better idea of where we are.
Well, I say we keep with the bulk and we wait on the reimbursement. And we're getting contractors out here. But I don't think we want to bear the cost of picking up all the debris that's going to be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars.
And we're picking up bulk, it's not reimbursement now. This is just our standard pickup. Because someone goes and takes their mattress out now, I really didn't have anything to do with the hurricane. And it's, and some of the things I'm looking at, I don't want to, I don't want to put on the federal government or the county, you know? This is, when we know, this is just our normal stuff. I just don't want it to get co-mingled in to where we have that challenge of where maybe they skip a section because it was co-mingled. They will separate a little bit, but the goal is to have it looking as good as possible with, minus the landscaping debris. And I understand it's high, we, you know?
Yep. Okay. Anything else on the subject?
So we really don't have any good answer when the city's going to start doing some work out there, at least make it look like an effort?
If you tell me that, we're picking the bulk. If you direct me to start picking up landscaping debris, I can have our team start and just start in sections so you can see the impact and then... Because if I have some here and some over there, I'm not going to get a good gauge on where, how fast it's going to take me to get it all up.
I mean, even if you could start picking up the lighter, the smaller piles at least. I know that they're smaller as opposed to the super big where people have lost tree, actual trees and cut them up to have the bigger logs. And some of them just have smaller limbs and just branches and things like that. I mean, because the residents aren't very happy right now.
Direction of the council. You tell me, go do the bulk, go pick up four yards and less, I'll go pick up four yards and less. I'll direct the staff, go through, pick up four yards and the bigger whenever the county comes, so get it.
I think we should do that. We've got to show some effort here.
We're going to be picking up four yards or less from a whole lot more, a whole lot higher percentage than you ordinarily would, so...
I mean, it's not based off of, it's not based off of my, the code revision or nothing like that. This is just like making an impact, what you said, getting the smaller piles. I don't want to say two yards, because two yards is really, you know, smaller. So I think the four yards is a good number. Because I do see a good amount of four-yard piles that we can possibly get to versus some, you know, 12, 14-yard piles that are pretty big. And then also maybe taking into consideration some areas that are site triangle issues to where people put them on the corners that if I locate it or get a call, which I have, it's a hazard to motorists, then maybe I can hit some of those too. If you see those disappear, then that may be the thought process behind getting that.
I think we need to push the county into open up that Avon Park site and somehow extending the reimbursement to the Avon Park facilities as well. But then also if the, you know, if the landfill was open to trees and yard debris, people would take care of a lot of it themselves. You know, when people are capable, get tired of looking at it, it'll get gone.
I think, Mayor, the last year when we had a hurricane, I had asked Mark the question, "If we picked it up ourselves, would we get reimbursed?" And he specifically said, "No, that they would not reimburse us."
Right. We have to be established as one of the contractors, so to speak. But I just feel there's a way to do it if all parties are willing to do it.
I think this is, I think this is, this is fluid. It's a discussion that we're having, right? So I may be able to get to a point, but I don't, I have to see what machinery. So if I say, "Okay, like you come up with the idea about taking it to our landscaping, it's not closed, right? It's not, it's, we're just not utilizing it, right?" So if I said, "Okay, we're going to do that, we're going to get the piles, we're going to get it a little bit higher, but then come back after we accept all the debris," I would have to put somebody out there making sure it's clean coming into the area. And then come back and say, you know, "We get a debris management contractor, maybe whoever's here, come over here and see what you can do for us and give us a base rate to come clean all this stuff up." And that way you provide the option, instead of someone driving all the way out to the county to dump it, going up to the northeast side where our landfill, where our yard debris landfill is and dumping it, dumping it off there. That's an option if the council decides that that's what they would want to do. In conjunction to helping, helping out, like if it was just you had a pickup truck and you can get rid of it, get it out of your grass and you're willing to do it, then, but we can't consolidate in a single area and then tell them to come get it. They said, "No, no go on that." The only ones that can do that is if they were in a HOA and it's private streets, then the contractor, unless they have a permit, will not go in and pick up in those private areas. But they would pick up if you took it to the right of way and they would pick it up.
Okay. All right. Is there anything the council wants to do with this right now?
Well, I'm only one of five, but I say we go ahead and pick up the smaller piles, start. Now, how you come up with which quadrant of the city to start in, good luck on you.
You have a question, Mayor?
Yes, come up to the microphone. Name and address for the record, please.
All right.
Name's Steve Alsop, 433 Northeast Sneed Circle. I wasn't going to speak tonight at all, just wanted to come listen. But if you guys need a place to start, Crystal Lake Club, we called the county today. They don't even know that we're part of the city. For 10 years, we've been annexed into the city. They don't have us listed. They wanted us to fill out one of these private road things. It's like the city just paved three of our streets, which you guys did a great job. I applaud you guys, I appreciate it. All the residents love it. But just wanted to throw that out there. We don't have huge piles, but it would give you some idea to come in in a central location. You know, I'm kind of, you know, throwing this out for my residents, I'm the park manager there, so if you need-
You're a good manager, brother.
So I just, yeah, I just wanted to throw that out there as a hint, like, you know, just if you guys wanted someplace to try it and get a gauge on it.
And during our push, we did put staff in there on a small, on our small garbage truck to pick up that debris.
Yeah, they did, they did a great job.
Because that would be an area that, even though it doesn't, it's not an HOA, it sure looks like one and it would probably have some damage from a contractor going in. And that would be something, maybe it's just we talked about to the side, but if they come up and they, everyone there puts their stuff over to the side, then maybe we can just take a truck to clear that area. But like to Councilwoman McHirr's statement, it's, where do we start? I'd rather someone tell me where to start than me being the one, so...
Yeah, I mean, as far as doing a specific area, if we're going to just go back to pick up as usual, I would be for that. But as far as going and, you know, picking up the storm debris specifically in one specific area, I think it's a mistake personally.
What about starting with the main roads?
I can do that. I can do that. I just, I will not, the reason why I said for picking up a certain area is because I will not be able to gauge how fast I can do it if I have a truck over here, a truck over there.
Well, as long as the residents see that we're making an effort.
Yeah, and-
I don't see how, why they would complain. I don't see how, why they would complain if we can show that we're, yes, we're picking up garbage. It may take us a little bit, cause we're over here and we're over there and we're over here, but we are trying.
Yeah, I, I, there's, we, we get the thank yous and we get some complaints, you know, of course, and people want their stuff picked up and we can, and it would just make a faster, like, to say we, we did, I have two trucks in an area, I can go in and say, hey, this area, we, we did, uh, twelve or fourteen blocks, we're able to get that. If I get the other one, it's, it's just kind of spaced out. It, it'd be one thing if I have four trucks, only got two, maybe one week only have one, um, until we, until we get it. Hopefully, that was just a suggestion, I guess do whatever the council directs me to.
Just pick it up, Jason.
Okay, I'll go up, I'll go up and I'll, I'll create my, our own map and then I'll, I'll have something and then find a way to get it over the manager and we can get that out. And maybe, you want to do this social media? We can do social media, we've cleared this section, you know, please don't go put something right back out there. I mean, but, uh, we can, um, cause there is a deadline on some of this stuff. So if we go through and we clear it, it's been long enough now. I think it's at the point where, that they had to get their debris out, which I feel it's been long enough. So if we go through and then someone comes out and drops ten yards, then they may be getting a bill. So, um, because that's, that's kind of how, they're only making one pass in the, in the, in the county. So I can go in, I can do the area, so we've, we've got this, we've got that, and we just go through and do it.
So what are you saying, Jason? Once you, once you pick this up, when are we going to go back to the regular schedule?
When we get it all picked up. When we get it all picked up.
That could take months?
I don't, I don't know right now. I, I, I would like to say, I mean, I may, I may start and then there may be four trucks show up tomorrow from wherever that, that was broke loose from Tampa or wherever, Georgia, they were able to get some more people down. I don't, I don't know how fast.
Well, after Hurricane Irene, the contractors took about six months to finish, so.
That's a long time. I, I think we, we'll, we'll be done before that, um, but it, it's, it would be trying to keep people, it's also the staffing. You know, you got to keep the people here and they have families, you know, trying to keep those individuals running. What's it, what's the chance that the truck breaks and now, hey, what's going on with that?
Sounds like the council's telling you to use your best judgment.
Yeah, I'm gonna do, I'll do my best to get them out there and make an impact and, and we'll do that.
Well, what's the final word from FEMA? I mean, what actually are they doing or what they're going to do or what can we tell people is FEMA doing their job?
So, so what FEMA does, FEMA just is a, is a, is a financial resource. FEMA's never the one picking up. The people that have to do the pickups are the cities and the counties. They're the ones that have to do it. The count, they're the ones that come back and reimburse. That's, it's up to the, the, the city or the municipality to do that collection. They, and they should have, that's what they tell you to have your debris management contracts in place. This is one of the things I looked at here and it came back and said, county does all our stuff. I said, well, that's great, you know, county does it, that's good, until now we got this. But I, I think, you know, looking at it, 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 it does seem to happen that we don't just get one storm a year, we'll get two. And they seem to be close together and then it's the same thing. Where's the people at? It's the same, same deal, so, uh, it's, uh, the other option is to say, okay, we don't want to deal with the county, we'll deal with somebody ourselves, and then that just becomes another procurement thing that we have to do.
I have a question for Danielle and Chrissy. Um, have we utilized the GoGov yet? I mean, is it ready to go? The texting?
It, it's not yet. We're still finalizing, uh, the app and working on the uploads with the contractor, but you want to add to that?
Yep, so we just got done with the final, yeah, it looks great, so we're waiting for them to publish it in the store.
Okay. So I'm wondering if maybe that can be, we can utilize that service with Jason's charts to tell the residents, hey, we've already picked up on this or we're going to pick up on this street.
Definitely could use it that way.
After this time, you won't be able to put your stuff back out for whatever reason.
Will that signup be on the webpage?
It will, and I also want to put some language on all of our utility bills that go out. Hey, there's a new app and give them a link to it where they can find it in the app store. So we're just going to try to broadcast it as wide as possible.
Okay. All righty, is that it? Very good. Item number nineteen, people want to bury bodies on their private property. Go ahead, Jerry.
Well, I discussed this a little bit in the previous meeting, um, the, um, so statute four oh seven point two six oh makes it pretty clear that unless we have something in place that prevents it, they can do it. Um, there's limitation with regard to size, there's a limitation in that they can't sell plots and so on. But, um, uh, it's my recommendation and still is my recommendation that you put something in place because, yeah, even though they may not think about it, maybe they do, whatever, but, I mean, how are you going to sell that piece of property? And what happens when you can't sell it, what does it become? You know it becomes, it becomes terrible.
Yeah.
Trouble, because, I mean, who's going to want to buy property if somebody's grandmother planted it, so.
Do we have that here in Avon Park? Do we have that here? Has somebody been buried in any of our?
It's been requested.
Yeah, that, that's what is bringing this, is someone's requesting this.
So.
I'm sure it's happened unrequested. Maybe unreported, but.
Yeah, well, that's, that's.
This is for the official one.
That's for, that's for the sheriff's department, so, but we, um, uh, from our, my perspective, I, I made some recommendations. I mean, I like, for the most part, Kane City's, um, ordinance, which says the cemetery is owned and operated by the city or the sole purpose of interment for, of human remains and shall be, shall only be used for the cemetery purposes. It is hereby prohibited and declared to be unlawful to inter or bury any human body or remains within the corporate limits unless such burial or interment is in an approved cemetery zone and designed for, as such, according to the law.
So obviously, we don't own and operate the cemetery, uh, Bogan, Bogan Villa. That's private, however, uh, you know, it is zoned for cemetery. I don't know how that came to be, I'm sure it happened a very long time ago, but.
It'd be grandfathered under this anyway.
Sure, and I don't think that necessarily the city wants to own them, so I mean, having a private cemetery is fine. It just needs to be zoned as a cemetery, not single family homes.
Well, if, if it's the, uh, direction of the, the council that you want to have something in place, I'll work with, um, Jeff, um, at Central Florida Regional Plane Council, we'll put something together for you for the next meeting.
Is, is anyone opposed to doing that?
No.
All right, I think that's a good idea.
That's all I have.
All right. Item number twenty, Heartland Cat Rescue. Yes, ma'am. Give name and address for the record.
Brenda Cravy, Seventeen East Pleasant Street, and I'm actually not Heartland, um, Cat Rescue, I'm just a, a citizen of Avon Park. Raised in Avon Park.
Is Heartland Cat Rescue an entity or is it?
It's a five oh one, three C C three, whatever they're called.
Five oh one C.
Okay, um, so it, this was all by accident. First of all, thank you for letting us come here, because this was all by accident that we realized that this was a problem in our community. I did, um, I think Chrissy put something up for you guys to look at, and there's some little faces of our local, um, furry cats from the community on the first page. I am not a crazy cat lady, I'm a dog person, okay? So, um, first of all, it's, it was totally by accident. Some, um, little cats took up their community at our church building and the church building wasn't real thrilled. The church people were not real thrilled with that and said, okay, you people that like animals, how do we get these cats away from the building? So, uh, my sister, who's with me today, Cindy Cross, who is also an Avon Park resident and homeowner in the city of Avon Park, we started reaching out to people who do, do this naturally, it's all volunteer. And, uh, we come to find out how many cats happen just by nature in our community. Um, it can be a really big problem and it's not something that, that we can say, do we want to take care of the cats? They're here. We didn't ask for them, they're just here. So, um, there's an, there's an opportunity to recognize that these cats breed rapidly. Um, so we witnessed one cat at the church building that had three litters within a year, and every litter was five to six cats. When we took the first litter to, um, what, we got the first litter out from under the church building, they were all babies. Four were female, one was a male. Okay, so you've got four breeding females that are now in the population. She had an older, um, batch of kittens that were just a few months older. Um, so those were automatically taken for spay, neuter, T, T, I'll have to try to do this right, T V N R. Or T N V R, because now it's not just T N R, they actually vaccinate them and they treat them for fleas and worms and they chip them and they clip their ear. So this identifies the cats to anybody that might come across them later as a cat that has already been taken care of and is no longer a threat to produce more animals into our community. It's not pretty for people to come to our city and see cats going through garbage and running up and down our, our streets. Um, they can bring disease to our community, but if we reduce the population and go through the vaccinations and, um, the flea and the worm control and just keeping that community in place, it keeps them from not wanting to have other cats come into their territory. They actually establish their own community and they don't have the need to produce all the odors and things to, to mate if they're fixed. So having this done is just, it's a, it's a win-win for the community. We have reached out to a few individuals in the community, the Yannis, everybody knows the Yannis, they've been here as long as I have or longer, I've been here since, uh, sixty-five. So I reached out to them because we found that around their properties, there were several cat colonies. Um, uh, if you know the, um, Tindles, they have the welding downtown, there's several cat colonies in their area. They're also volunteering to pay. My sister has, 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 um, donated a lot of money to have cats fixed. Um, she is also a dog and cat person. She's not a crazy cat lady, she has one cat. So, um, she is fostering one now that didn't, didn't succeed in being re-released. He was too timid, so she's fostering him, he will be placed in adoption. Um, but the babies, if they're too young and can't be fixed, they're put into foster programs and people foster them until they're old enough to be fixed. And at that time, um, they will be fixed and then an adopter will pay those fees back to the rescue. Um, so basically, uh, what we would like you to, to notice is how fast and how much, I have, I have the picture in front of me so that I can help. You could, you could potentially have eleven million, six hundred and six thousand, seventy-seven cats in nine years born to one pair of cats, one male, one female, and that is at a three percent survival rate. So, um, the cats can, can become pregnant between three and four months old. Their gestation period is only two months long, and then once they have a litter, it's about nineteen days they can get pregnant again. So you're talking about just an occurrence that just goes on and on and on. So how can we help, um, with this? We need, honestly, I, I, we need community involvement. And so, um, there are volunteers that are out there working, we, we could definitely use more. Um, we need a low-cost spay and neuter program. So right now, we have a couple of counties that are helping with the, the local cats here in Avon Park and they are in Sarasota and in, in Port Charlotte. And then a volunteer is driving them, picking them up, et cetera, et cetera, at fifty-five dollars each. If you call the local veterinarians, you're going to get a quote of three hundred to four hundred dollars for one cat spay or neuter. That doesn't include vaccinations, it doesn't include the worming, it doesn't include the flea treatment, it doesn't include the chip, anything like that. So, um, there is a need for a community-based program that is less expensive. It also would be really, it would be really great for the community if there was a way that people who do have cats could get them spayed or neutered cheaper, um, through some kind of grants or funding through maybe just reaching out to vets and saying, you know, where could we get low cost to prevent these outbreaks of more cats, more colonies everywhere that you look? So basically, we're just asking for support, support as a community to help. And I, I have, um, I have asked here that we, we provide a grant to get this started so that we could re, you know, get some of these cats taken in and taken care of without burdening citizens that are just handing out their money. And basically, that's where we're at right now, is it's just citizens giving their money for a cause to clean up the community. So, um, I'm, I will be glad to continue to reach out to different businesses and different families in the city that have been here long-term that would like to see things like this done. Um, I do work, I work full-time, I run a company about sixty, seventy hours a week, so I, I don't have a lot of spare time. Um, but I would, you know, be glad to do anything to help with any committees that are set up or put in place.
Did, did you say that your group feeds these animals?
They have to be fed or they will, they will go on rampages. So yes, they're actually fed and cared for.
You don't think that feeding them is causing more cats?
No. It's, it's proven that it's not. If you feed them and keep them where they are, they don't migrate to start more colonies, they stay low, they stay central. And then if you reduce that breeding, that constant breeding, you reduce the numbers.
Animal control won't take care of it?
Oh, animal control, if they pick them up, they kill them. That's automatic. Um, that was the first place I reached out to. I skipped over saying that because that was the first place I reached out to with the church cats. That's what we call them, is the church cats. Um, I asked animal control and they said, oh, we can, we can pick them up and we euthanize them. So you're taking animals, which are, you know, to me, animals are innocent, and, and euthanizing them just because they're there. So the way, and you could euthanize this five, you're going to have another five here and you're going to have another five here and another five here.
Issue is, there's food there.
Okay, but if you don't feed, if you feed them, they won't go after the birds, the squirrels, because they're not hungry.
Or be in people's property going through their trash and so forth.
Massively miscapitulated.
So, I'm sorry, ma'am, what's your name again?
Brenda Cravy.
Um, Ms. Brenda, so let me make sure I'm understanding this right. You want to provide a certain service for the cats so they can remain on the street?
So they don't keep reproducing.
But they are, they are going to remain on the street?
They have to.
Okay. Uh, I'm not a cat person, I'm more of a dog girl, even though I don't have one. I'm going to say no, and I'm going to tell you why. The city of Avon Park had a meeting earlier this year about the homeless and the meeting lasted for two hundred and, I'm sorry, two hours and forty-five minutes. And throughout the whole meeting, I never spoke a word, cause I, I just listened to the city and what the city thought about the homeless. And so if the city can't feed the homeless, I really don't care whether the city feed a cat or not. That's just my opinion.
Yes, ma'am, I respect that because we also help feed the homeless, you know, and, and that's a, it's a, that's a big thorn in my side. Um, but I can't, I, I don't think that the homeless are breeding and that's.
They're breeding.
We, we actually do, that's one of our other causes is, is, um, homeless people, but, and, and I'm on your side with that, believe me, one hundred percent. What we're trying to prevent is more cats. It's not, it's not asking the city to feed them, because that's taken care of by, by volunteers.
Ms. Brenda, why would we want all these cats running around anyway?
You don't, you want to fix them, that's the whole reason you want to fix them.
I'm just saying, the one that we fixing, why, why do we want them running around? There's a cat in my neighborhood and I made the mistake of feeding that cat.
It'll be back.
Can't get rid of it. He just sit there and look at me and I, I had just told myself, I cannot feed him because I don't want him there. He comes and I can't sit outside because fleas get on me, okay? And I go out and I spray and I spray and I spray and, you know, he's everywhere in the neighborhood and he's just bringing fleas. And so I promised myself that I would not feed that cat. And I'm not sure of everybody else having this problem, but I just don't think that we should be offering, offering service to cats just so they can stay out on the streets. I mean, I think that, uh, the Humane Society should take care of that problem. That's why, that's why we got them.
I donate to them too, and about three other cat rescues and take care of cat colonies, because they're already there, Bernice, they're there. Um, what we want to do is we want to keep them from getting so big. Eventually, you can stop, you can stop the reproduction if they're fixed. It takes a lot, but, um, we fixed in the last few months, we've, we've fixed about twenty, twenty-five cats. Believe it or not, that cuts down a whole lot of reproduction. And the only cats that are taken to be put down are cats that are sick or cats that are injured and can't fend for themselves. Um, if the, if the cat is pregnant when it goes for the neuter, it is, they are aborted at that point.
Why, why are you not offering? Why are you not offering services and get them, get them taken care of and then offering some type of adoption program for them instead of just letting them stay on the streets? Cause that means you're gonna have to continuously feed them, let somebody else feed them who wanna love them and take care of them.
Because the shelters are already overrun and part of the-
No, I'm not talking about the shelter, I'm talking about the organization that you're in.
Oh, they do, they do have adoption. It's actually called Heartland, I'm not in it, but they're called Heartland Cat Rescue and Adoption Agency. So they take young cats or cats that cannot live on the street because there's a difference in a domestic cat and a community cat. Some people say feral, but there's a difference. They, they're feral because they don't want to have a lot of human interaction, that would be a feral cat. A community cat actually likes interaction, but they like to stay where they belong. So they take a small area and they live there. But if you leave them alone and just let them live there, they breed to that point that we were talking about.
They breed to their food source, like every animal in nature. However much food they have is how much they will breed. That is a simple fact with every animal on earth. God made them that way.
They can't breed if they're fixed.
So quit feeding them and they, trust me, they will regulate by themselves without any interaction whatsoever.
I have a disagree.
And these, well, I can tell you, I don't know about you personally, but I know this group also feeds them on private property without the property owners asking, without them wanting it. So I would ask you, if you're involved in that, to also stop doing that as well.
I don't feed on any property that I haven't been given permission to.
Well, somebody that feeds that group of cats, I know for a fact feeds on several properties that they don't have permission to be on.
Right, yeah.
And those feed trays end up in the street every time. It's a problem.
Okay.
All right, anything else on the cat rescue?
So are we gonna be able to help? I mean, I hate for her to come up here and just have done this and, you know.
I don't think it's something that the tax dollars should be spent on.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Shelley, I just don't think taxpayers' dollars should be spent on cats, I'm sorry. If the city didn't wanna spend it on humans for the homeless, I definitely don't think they should be spent on cats, it's just my opinion.
I agree, it should be spent on the humans too, Bernice. And like I said, I don't, this is just something that happened to fall in my lap because they decided to live at the church building we were at, that we attend, where we attend church. But I thank you all for your time and remember, it's not about the cats, this has never been about the cats, it's about the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have number twenty-one, Christmas decorations discussion. Ms. Kelly?
Yes, I was requested to put this on the agenda for a community discussion, how the council wants to move forward with Christmas decorations this year.
Okay.
Do we not have a line item in our, for that certain amount fix them out like we did last year?
But we don't have a plan for how that's gonna be done. Have you been contacted by any groups wanting to decorate?
Rosie does.
Yes, ma'am. Why don't you shed some light on this subject? Just give your name and address for the record, please.
Rosie Longenicker, six twenty-one East Cornell Street.
Camala Long, two four eight six South Lakeletta Drive.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
So a year ago, we were approached to basically look at the decorations in the mall as they had sort of aged and a group of interested individuals came together and decided, you know, we wanted to look at getting some Christmas decorations after the last year's Christmas season so that we can get a discount. And we put together a plan, presented it, sent it into the city manager, which he asked us to do at that time, and no decisions or nothing was forthcoming. We came before city council once before and we were told that individuals could not receive funds to spend that money, right? So we got kind of in a stuck limbo position. So we have a list of items that we would like to purchase, we've submitted that list, we've got brochures and items that we think would look really pretty, you know, we've come up with a plan, sent that in, but we do not have or are willing to put forth four thousand dollars than to submit those expenses to be reimbursed by the city. So we are kind of stuck. We have two organizations that we are affiliated with, one is the Garden Club, the Women's Garden Club.
Avon Park Founder's Garden Club.
Yeah, and they've been very instrumental in doing a lot of beautification in our city and around different buildings and areas. And so that is one organization and of course, I'm affiliated with the Avon Park Chamber of Commerce. So we have two organizations that are established in our community, doing community service and we'd be willing to receive those funds and disperse them appropriately with obviously approval.
Didn't you say that you submitted a plan, itemized list of stuff to buy?
We did.
We did, last year we gave Mr. Schrader a list of different ideas that we had that we could implement.
So you'd actually get like skew numbers of this product?
Well, we did because we had the books that we submitted from, we selected the items from different magazines.
Did you get a total for all that?
No, almost everything online that you go and look for, I've got, I've got like four or five different companies here, I've been online shopping and most of them will not give you a price, there's no prices listed on their website. You have to have in your mind what you want so that you can call them and get a price on them.
I see.
Now, I presented last year banners, holiday banners, because the banners, I hang forty-two wreaths every year on the mall, on the lamp posts. Every other one is done. And I was told that there is banner hardware that can be put on the other lamp posts, we're just talking about doing maybe every other lamp post, putting a banner on it. And I have a price list here of this year's banners from this one company and they're not plastic, I priced some umbrella because that's a good heavy product, it withstands weather, it can withstand winds. I think two years ago, when they put up banners, we had a hurricane and threw them all out. So, you know, that's, that won't happen with a some umbrella type. They're a little bit more expensive, but they have a warranty on them. Most of them have a three-year warranty on wear and color. So the more you pay, the better the warranty is.
So the list that you provided, did it have, I haven't actually seen the list, but did you see, have a want list, this is the number one want, number two, number three?
No, we never, we didn't, it didn't get that far. Mr. Schrader asked for ideas, so here's a list of ideas and I have a set here I can give to Ms. Danielle that she can go over. I've got different prices on, like, three different companies, two on banners, one is last year's prices, but I have this year's product that's available, but no prices. And there's different, different things that we looked at, like lighted Christmas trees, you know, down by Donaldson Park, they put up the tree with the hoop. I've priced it, priced some of those. And on that, you're looking at anywhere, depending on how much of and how tall they are, and Danielle's here, I've got a copy of, just to show you a couple of the things that we looked at, that I looked at.
One of the things we talked about too was, you know, it doesn't have to be the whole mall at the same time.
No.
In the same way that the public work-
Danielle's.
-department is doing a couple blocks at a time with beautification of flowers, we could just do a couple blocks at a time of just adding some decorations that are well-lit and pretty that, you know, shows that we're modernizing our decorations. We're not saying abandon any of the old decorations that has been there for centuries, not quite centuries, but we just like to reposition them in other areas of the mall.
Okay, here's a couple of the lighted displays, these are standing lighted displays, if you wanna take a look at them. I ran those off just so you could have an idea. And then there's another idea that, that was on this list. I've talked to the manager at Sun and Lakes, they have a metal-framed tree to put live plants on to make a Christmas tree. It simply looks like an upside-down tomato cage with rings on it for the plants. And they have kind of promised me, I have to go back to them on Wednesday to see if we do absolutely get it this year. We were talking about doing every other year, Avon Park would use it and then they would use it at the following year, but they still owned the tree. Cause I tried to buy it from them. Cause I wanted it. So I wanted it for the garden club. So we came up with the idea of every other year. And my idea for that tree, and it's a good-sized tree, it would have to go in one of the vacant spaces and I was thinking maybe down by Donaldson Park because that's where a lot of the Christmas happenings are. Would be to put the plants on it that could be used elsewhere in the city after the season. They could be taken and planted somewhere else in the city. They wouldn't be poinsettias, maybe you could put Exorahs or Vermilliads, you know, if you've ever been up to Bach Tower, they put one up every year. And that's what it is, it's got rings on it that you just put your live plants in.
You could classic Caladium to do something else.
We could also do that.
Well, Caladiums would never work. That's not, that's-
It's not their season, that's right.
It's not the Caladium season, you would have to, you would have to go with something that didn't require a lot of water because of the irrigation situation that you have on the mall. You would have to have something like Vermilliads or Exorahs. And Jason, could you think of some others that are, would be a good plan to go with?
Yeah, they have several types of flowers that we can look into, also things like Potos that kind of come down and draped, there's plenty of different, Salvia, there's all kinds of things that you can make the planters and make them look nice.
And, you know, Rosie is actually part of the team that decorates Jacaranda, she also decorates City Hall, so and does wreaths along the mall on her own, she puts them up, you know, along every pole, other pole, right? So she's taken a lot of self-directed, self-motivated-
Yep.
-inspiration to just keep decorating and I think, you know, we should come alongside her as a city, as a community.
Absolutely. That was the whole point of coming up with the four thousand dollar budget is to try to-
You know, for four thousand dollars, you don't get very much. I mean, just to be honest.
I'm trying to figure out what you gonna do with four thousand dollars, I mean, that's-
Well, one of these flags, minimum, an eighteen by thirty-six flag is fit, on sale is fifty-six dollars. Right now, you wouldn't be able to buy it on sale, it would be seventy, seventy-six dollars to eighty dollars for it.
How many flagpoles were there that needed flags?
I put up forty-two wreaths, that's every other one. So there would probably be forty-two flagpoles.
There's half the money right there.
And if you wanted to put, if you, did you show the lighted trees? Those lighted trees, the one that really looks the nicest, that red one, is six hundred and nine dollars.
Ms. Rosie-
For only eight foot-
I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Ms. Rosie, I got a question. Everybody likes to concentrate on Donaldson Park, we have a mile-long mall.
Uh, yes, ma'am, we do. And my, the idea of doing this, the one big tree in front of Donaldson Park is because that's where the choir sings, that's where you have all your Christmas activities. There's at the head of the, at the head of the mall-
What, twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven, you have a big angel that goes up there with smaller critters with, I think there's deer with it and a huge Christmas tree, a seven, nine-foot or fifteen-foot Christmas tree that goes up there that Anna Marie Feeny got from Lowe's about, well, she's been gone, what, two years now? Two years before that. So there is-
So perhaps we could get something in the middle?
What we, what we need to do is work, work from end to end, if, like, to take four thousand dollars and you split it, two thousand dollars on this section of the mall, two thousand dollars on this section of the mall, start at both ends and work towards the middle. It's not gonna be done, there's no possible way it can be done in even two or three years. You're looking at a five to seven-year project.
Like I said, the flags take up half, half the money, that is something for the entire mall.
But the mall, the flags run the whole mall. Both sides.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Kelly.
Is the four thousand dollars slated just for decorations? So does the council then wanna give us direction to go forth and decorate and we'll work on the plan together?
That was the next point, yeah.
Yep.
That would be great, but then-
Are you feeling festive?
I am, I'm super festive.
Okay.
Let's do it, let's do it.
I remember one thing at the, when the lady from Watumpka, when she came.
Yes, yes.
So remember, they were looking for decorations up and up along their riverfront area, so they made it a competition.
Yes.
So what about like the air, the student welding groups, like at the college or at the high school or whatever, what if we had some kind of a competition and they could even put up some kind of little placard and if they made, I mean, they, I guarantee you the students could make those trees.
Well, yeah.
With their materials and then if we had some kind of competition, I mean, the businesses do an amazing job every time you have a door decorating contest and all that kind of stuff, all the way down Main Street.
At Anna Marie Feeny, she had, she always decorated the Veterans Square.
Right, with the trees, yeah.
Okay, then there was the Candy Cane Lane, which, they still put up the trees for the Candy Cane Lane, but that actually was decorated by students from the different schools in the area.
Right.
And that's not done anymore. That could be-
It's because their decorations got stolen.
Right, so if we use-
And then there was the next one that had Christmas trees that the businesses did.
And their decorations were stolen.
But that, the lady from Watumpka, I don't think you went to that meeting, but their stuff, you can't steal it, cause it's extremely heavy.
Yeah.
And it's a permanent fixture, but it's actually a drawing card down there.
It's hard, so that's another option. We do have a lot of artists in Highlands County and even in Avon Park, even in our area. We have metal welders, we have people that do metal work. So we can certainly engage different organizations, but, you know, again, it's city property, so we have to be given permission to say, I'm going to, I'm going to engage a company that's private to say, hey, we're gonna put this metal thing to mow around, Jason's Mowers.
Yeah, so Jerry, I mean, it wouldn't be wrong for the council to have a competition that we award, some type of award to every year for the best Christmas art?
No.
Okay. So-
So then what would they do, like adopt a block?
No, I would say that's come up with the best art piece.
And have a theme each year, change the theme every time.
Right. Especially when you're talking about, you know, welding fabricators, I mean, they can build some crazy things that are awesome that will last forever, you know? Not these Walmart stuff that's gonna-
Fade and fall apart, yeah.
All right, I got it. So then they'd know that once you, once you made it and put it out there, that it will belong to us or they could do it back every year?
I would say that the winner, we keep.
Yeah, and put a plaque on it.
Right, they get advertisement for however long. We had to set up the, you know, the parameters of the competition, but I think Danielle and this fine group of people could probably figure that out.
We've already got it figured out, we just need to get permission to put it on the mall.
We'll find a place.
You're gonna get permission once we get everything on a nice sheet of paper so we can actually approve.
Okay, good.
I only asked that because that was a question before when this came up as to where we were gonna store it, cause obviously, we can't put it under the gazebo, cause-
Well, there's a shed out off Alamand on the corner of Lanier and Azalea where there's all the Christmas trees and the sleigh that's in the parade, all that stuff's out there. That's where the garden club stores, that's where we store all of our Christmas stuff.
Okay.
Actually, we were out there today and brought all of ours back, plus the forty-two wreaths to put on the mall.
But I mean, if we did art pieces, technically, they could, we could become that city of charm, it has beautiful art pieces there all year long.
Something that builds every year.
And we just decorate it-
They could stay.
-to show the Christmas festivity of the season.
Right.
There's a lot of creative people, let's use them to come up with ideas.
Yeah, I know, I'm not creative at all, so why am I even figuring this out? Let's get the right people for the job.
All righty, well, I think-
Okay, I have, I have one other thing that, I went ahead because we, the garden club is helping to put up those wreaths and I went ahead and bought ribbon to do those wreaths and that's the ribbon. This is the bow that's gonna go on those wreaths and City Hall's gonna match it, so it'll be kinda, since I'm the one that does it, City Hall's gonna match it. But this I got on sale, I tied the bow, but this gives us, this is ten yards, it makes three bows. But this I got on sale. I tied the bow, but the, this, this gives us, this is ten yards. It makes three bows. Okay, I have $119 invested in ribbon. I was wondering if I could get the city to give me back enough, enough money to pay for the forty-two bows, which would be fourteen rolls of ribbon, which is $83.
Did the garden club do it?
No, nobody's paid me yet. I haven't turned, I haven't turned it into the garden club.
Can the garden club be the one that did it? So, that way we can donate to a 501(c)(3), not an individual?
Well, we're not, we're not a.
Well, shame on you.
We're not a 501(c)(3).
How do you expect anything done? You're not a 501(c)(3).
Well, we just aren't and never have been. Garden clubs, garden club's almost eighty years old and it just never has.
Is it?
Can the Historical Society volunteer?
Yep, we're going to ignore the fact that that was said from the audience and suggest that the Historical Society is the one that's going to do this. So, that we can reimburse the Historical Society, which is a 501(c)(3).
Okay, there we go.
Oh, Mayor, Mayor, can I say, you want to say something?
Yeah.
I was going to say, is it, it's $83?
For, for the fourteen rolls, it's $83.30.
Okay, I can just write you a check, like personally, that'd be fine.
Whatever. I was just asking if maybe somebody could, could help besides the garden club. $83.
God bless.
Mayor, what was, what's your name, ma'am?
Nancy. No, in the audience.
The last time this came before the council, I think there was a list of people or they wanted to volunteer. So, if we were giving it to her, what are we going to do about all the volunteers that wanted to be on this committee that the council decided that we didn't need a committee?
They were my volunteers, so I have the list.
There is, there is no committee.
There is no, we can't have a committee because of the sunshine laws.
Right, I remember that. But what I'm saying is, are y'all going to notify?
They're my people. They're on my list of volunteers.
They're going to blast it all over Facebook and it's going to be a great thing.
Uh, no.
Okay, they're going to blast it somewhere.
Private group.
Okay, all right. I think everybody understands what's going on here. Anything else?
No, just want to get the money to decorate and make it pretty. We've got like less than.
Please, please connect with Ms. Kelly.
Thank you. We'll do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. No, thank you guys.
I'll see you tomorrow.
Yes.
I'll write my own check.
All right, item number twenty-two. We got some cheerleaders want to ride a fire truck. Hootethunk.
I hope we can make this quick.
It doesn't make it quick one way or another.
It's up to you. I know this is a liability anyway you do it. I'm not sure it's a whole lot more liable than people riding around on a trailer.
We have to get the comments to die down a little bit here so we can actually get back to the meeting. Why is it down there? All right, please continue.
I was just saying, this is a liability, I know. I'm sure Jerry's going to speak up and have quite a lot to say, but probably not a whole lot different than people riding on a trailer. Uh, this is in a somewhat controlled environment. You know, we're doing ten, fifteen miles an hour down the road. I do have something that I can build to put in the ladder so that it will be sort of my, more like a chair with arms where they can't really, the old way, they were sitting on the rail and if they leaned back, they could fall over. The, what I'm kind of talking about is something sitting in it. Well, that's the past. We're done with the past. What I'm talking about now is building something in the middle so they could sit on it and they would have railings on either side of them. That's, that's somewhat safer, but I'm still sure he's going to say, this is a bad idea if you want. But either way, I mean, people riding trailers in the parade.
Has anybody ever fell off the fire truck ever in the whole city, Avon Park history?
Not that I am aware of, no. I think it would have stopped then if that had happened.
Yeah, bad idea. But it's up to you whether you want to assume the liability associated with that or not. But I would say that the releases that they proposed, that form is no good.
Okay, so.
And I, I did propose to Mark in twenty-two, 2022, that if he was going to allow it, that he use the form that I provide to him. I think he decided not to do it at all at that time. But I mean, just, I, so you're on a jury and you get somebody who's injured badly and feel bad for whoever did get injured, obviously, as a first priority. But they fell off the city's fire truck. I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be big dollars.
Well, ask Chrissy, didn't, because remember, we had talked about the school board when you were the interim city manager as far as the school board assuming liability because it was a school function.
That is correct.
And you said that the school board does take liability.
Correct, and we also checked with our insurance company as well. And Denise, can you confirm that's correct, that it indemnifies us?
They could list us that way, but also they said that, our insurance said that this is very common, you know. Cities do it everywhere and it's, it's not uncommon to, to have that in a parade.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, it's a matter of what you, you know, how much liability you want to assume. If your insurance is going to cover it, good. But I would say if the, the school board is going to indemnify you and provide their insurance, even better.
Well, if we need to, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve G-22.
So, nothing, nothing's changed with the school board portion. They're willing to do that?
That was roughly August of this year that we spoke, that I spoke with them directly.
So, obviously, we need to contact them again, make sure that's.
Kamala Long, Avon Park Chamber of Commerce, twenty-eighth East Main Street. So, I spoke with Coach Witten today and that is still in play. They are willing to do that. The school board is willing to have the certificate of liability and indemnifying the city. This is a forty-year generational history of like grandmothers, mothers, and daughters that have ridden on top of the fire trucks. And it's just the granddaughters now have not been able to ride on the fire truck. So, they're really, Hines County, we've never had, and in a lot of other cities, they've never had. Obviously, if kids are being stupid, then things will happen just on the sidewalk. So, it's a matter of recognizing that there is an honor being given to be ridden to, you know, on the, to use the fire truck. And that honor has to be respected. So, I think it's all about training and rules and abiding by what's appropriate. And we're willing to do that.
Lots of chaperones.
Correct.
Adult chaperones, not fireman chaperones, but adult chaperones.
Yes, the school does have that. So, Coach Witten is willing to do that.
Mayor, I'd like to say, so I'm not exactly sure why we're visiting this, but I guess some people has been, you know, let someone else convince them of it. I just think, and I like, I like this to be on record, is that if a firefighter can't ride the fire truck while he's moving, I don't think a youth or teenager or whatever should be able, I don't care what insurance covering what. If a firefighter cannot ride a fire truck while he's moving in the air, in certain areas, then I don't think a teenager or youth or student should be able to. I think that's important.
So, I just have a question on that, Ms. Taylor. What is the difference, what is the difference in a firefighter riding the fire truck and a garbage man riding the garbage truck? Because I also see that also.
Well, we're talking about, we're talking about adults, you know, that's riding that truck, that garbage truck.
And one is a matter of a parade.
Yeah, we're talking about adults and these are kids. And y'all already know how I felt because back in 2022, I already told you how I felt. It doesn't change. This is a child. And it's a big red fire truck. And what image do you think that it gives?
A child on a fire truck.
Okay, coming from a male point of view.
As far as what, them not sitting down correctly or?
Moving on. Any other questions about the cheerleaders on the fire truck?
No, but I made the motion, so.
Did you make a motion?
I did, to approve G-22.
I didn't hear a motion.
Oh, yeah, I did.
Make it again.
Um, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve G-22 for the Avon Park Fire Department to have the cheerleaders on top of the truck with the safety, the safety precaution you have there in the middle.
And school board.
And the school board.
Indemnifying.
Indemnifying them.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions?
I just suggest that we have a certified paramedic or whatever on the truck at the same time.
We will.
I thought we had one. Okay.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Deputy Mayor Benner?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passive.
Last but not least, regular updates from the city manager.
This is going to be at least a two-hour update. Just want to warn you. I did receive a sample letter of FDOT issuing authority to local law enforcement entities to trespass vagrants or loiterers that are in the right-of-way. I'm specifically thinking about the mall area on seventeen. If you would like me to pursue one of those letters for our law enforcement to trespass people on the mall, please let me know and I'll go ahead and see if we can get one of those letters from FDOT.
Yeah, I think we could.
They seemed, the response that I got from DOT was that, you know, that it's pretty common that they allow it. It's not even absolutely, whether we absolutely have to have the letter, but they felt it was important enough that they would, they came up with a letter, so.
Okay, your state mandated ethics training is due by December thirty-first. There's two options. We can set up an online version for you and you take it on your own. Or we could wrangle Jerry to come in and do a special meeting and a training for everybody all at once.
Online.
Online.
Online, okay.
I want to hang out with Jerry.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm doing one next week for Zoffo Springs and believe me, it's not, yeah, I love Zoffo Springs. But, but you know, it's four hours of teaching, so.
I'm just giving them the option. December council meetings are scheduled for the ninth and the twenty-third. City Hall is closed on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. I didn't know if you wanted to go to one meeting for December or have both. It's your pleasure.
Ordinarily, we have one unless there is something that is emerging.
Yeah.
I thought we had already decided it.
I thought we did too.
I thought we decided November and December it would only be one meeting.
That is correct.
Yep. And like I say, if something pops up that we absolutely have to have, of course.
And Chrissy wants to know if we can have a CRA meeting on December ninth.
Yeah, I'll see why not. If you got something good, don't waste my time.
Everything's good with the city, right? And that's all I have. Thank you.
Before we close, what, I'm, I see that there's still a meeting set for the twenty-third of December or has that been moved?
Yeah, that's what I was just asking about, if they wanted just one meeting in December and they said December ninth.
So, you're just going to have one meeting? Sorry, I was still concentrating.
All right, anything else from the city manager?
No, sir, thank you.
Seeing none, anything else from the city? Seeing in opposition, entertaining motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.